It's now seven P M. I would like to welcome everyone, residents, guests, business owners, to the East Point City Council Regular Meeting. Is today is December seventh, twenty twenty one. We have a couple more weeks and we are in a new year. We always start our meeting with the invocation led by our mayor Pro Tem Sarah Lucino, followed by our pledge of allegiance. We ask you to join us at this time. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dear God, we ask for your guidance as we undertake the business of the city of East Point. During this holiday season, please remind us of the blessings that we have even during these trying times. Please remember to help us keep all of our prayers, our thoughts and prayers for those in Oxford who suffered great tragedy over the last week. We will, we must all continue to work together to make the best decisions for our loved ones along with the loved ones of others. Please help us to stay strong, embracing patience as we finally may see some light. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen, Jesus' name. Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you all that joined in with the prayer. She always does a good prayer. That's why we always have her do it after all these years. And then thank you for joining in with the pleasure of allegiance. We have a presentation from Bird Mobility Transportation. We want to start with them, but I think the roll call should have went first before the presentation. So I'm probably gonna... Can we do the roll call, Ms. Walton?
Absolutely. Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmember Baker.
Here at East Point.
Councilmember Curly.
Here at East Point.
Councilmember De Monaco.
Here in East Point.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point.
And Mayor Owens.
Here in the city of East Point. Thank you. Next, we're gonna do the presentation by Bird Mobility Transportation. Are they on here? I'm trying to see their names.
Yes, you have Garrett with Bird. Can you guys hear me okay?
Hey, how are you this evening?
I am doing very well. How is the city of East Point?
We're great. You have your, you have the floor and tell us something about this mobility transportation. And you have the floor. Thanks for coming.
Cool. I know that a present tension was sent over as well, so I can quickly run through that or just really speak high level, make it more conversational as all whatever the, really the, the community wants to do. But Bird is looking to execute an M O U with the city of East Point that would bring our micro mobility service of electric scooters to you. So we're proposing that we would start with a fleet size of fifty scooters. These are shared electric scooters, so you would download our Bird app. Actually, could you give me access to share? I would kind of just want to run through this presentation just so you have some visual guides as well.
Absolutely. Can you share now?
Yes, I can. And can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Excellent. Yeah, so what is Bird? Bird is a last mile stand up electric sharing company. So really, we have been in this space. We pioneered and founded really the shared scooter, shared mobility space four and a half years ago. Our ultimate goal was to eliminate unnecessary car trips, which we believe that anything under two and a half miles is an unnecessary car trip and can be supplemented by another form of transportation, something more sustainable. Of course, our vehicle is the electric scooter. So we are proposing that we execute a operating agreement with the city of East Point that would bring fifty of these scooters to your community as an alternative form of transportation. So obviously, what we're trying to do is really solve first and last mile transportation issue. Obviously, that's a little bit stronger in these large metropolitan cities. So you don't hear me say the word connectivity a lot in alternative options. That's really what we're trying to provide the, the city of East Point here with, obviously reducing car congestion and just improving your overall carbon footprint with providing more sustainable forms of transportation. So how it works is you would download our Bird app. Kind of just like Uber and Lyft, if you're familiar with that interface, you'd be able to see where the available scooters are to rent and to ride by those Bird icons. Before you even get to that, you'll go through a series of tutorials, really walking you through what are the rules, the regulations, the scooter etiquette, as you may, in the city of East Point when you're running operations. All of these rules and regulations and really how we run operations is decided by the community to best fit you as well. Once you do go through, you have to do be eighteen years or older to operate a Bird scooter. So you have to upload a driver's license, a state I D, a passport, something stating that you're over the age of eighteen. Once you go through all of that, that's not the end of your rider education. We do put these riders in proactive educational funnels as well. So we hit them with email campaigns, in-app messaging. We want this to be a joint partnership, strategic partnership, so doing press releases together. You get access to our social media content as well, so really hitting these riders from a bunch of angles to help educate them. And again, with the rules and regulations of this. So once you do finally get, you're able to see the available scooters to rent and to ride. Usually, these scooters are available from about six A M. until midnight. You would walk up to them. Each one of them has a Q R code, a unique Bird I D. It's a dollar to unlock and then a per minute fee, so it is a time based meter. We do operate on a dockless model, so no additional infrastructure will be needed to be implemented in the city of East Point. We just use your existing infrastructure. So really, rule of thumb, the electric scooter, it's an extension of your bike community as well. They go where bikes go. We park them where bikes park, so utilizing bike racks, utilizing that furniture loading zone. So next to street signs, street lamps, trash cans, really out of the pedestrian right away is going to be the rule of thumb when parking these. This is the Bird, our Bird Zero operating vehicle right now. As of today, this would be the vehicle you're getting. It does look like a lot of these Midwest markets are actually going to be getting our Bird Ones with the launch of next year. As you can imagine, Bird is a seasonal business. We operate in the summer, spring, and fall months, and we hibernate the scooters in the winter. There's a lot of Bird puns when you work with us, so just buckle up for that. So obviously, we actually work with a local entrepreneur so to make this day to day operations out of them and jump into in a little bit. But this is the physical vehicle itself. So obviously, street legal, the top speed of these are fifteen miles per hour. Average, average speed of commuter on a bicycle, fifteen miles per hour, so we wanted to match that. Headlight, brake lights, reflectors, bells. Obviously, it's electric motor as well, so they have to be charged up every single night, which would be done by our local entrepreneur. Technology, again, you heard me saying this operating zone can be customized by the city, and this is how we really do it. Obviously, we're, we're hitting these riders with messaging and rider education, but we layer on tech to get that point across as well. So we can do geo fencing or geo speeds. A geo fence is a layer of G P S where we can communicate with these scooters in real time. So let's say you have a downtown area where you don't allow skateboards or bicycles. We could implement a layer of G P S that will not allow the scooters to work in that area. So the rider was coming up to that area, the scooter would beep three times and it would seize operations. Obviously, we don't lock the tires for safety concerns, but the physical motor on the scooter would not work. So after that happens, it's kind of like an old school razor scooter where you have to actually pedal it through. Usually, the rider gets off and pushes it through or ends the ride there. So we can do a, that is called a dismount where the motor does not work. We can do a no parking area where the rider can utilize the scooter through the air but to not end the ride in that certain location. Or we can do a reduced speed area. So let's say you have a big event, you want to be able to have scooters utilized to get you to that event, but maybe a lot of pedestrians are going to be around. You don't want fifteen miles per hour. Let's go ahead and throttle that down to eight. Helmets, helmets are available for all Bird users. Obviously, it is not a state mandate that you wear a helmet when operating a Bird scooter in the state of Michigan. But we do promote it, so we allow all riders to get a free helmet in app. All you have to do is pay for shipping and handling. We do some fun promos where if you take a selfie with your helmet before you start your ride, you get a little discount. So obviously, promoting helmet usage. Parking management, I've dedicated the slide to where we can incentivize and recommend areas where they should be ending rides, which I will dedicate in a little bit. Transportation benefits, this is a no cost micro mobility solution for the city. So no budget needs to be allocated for Bird to come and run operations in East Point. We're obviously just looking for the green light, the execution of an M O U. There's no operational burden on the city themselves as we will actually be working with a local entrepreneur. This is someone who lives in East Point, who actually be running scooter operations day to day. And that's what I really want to talk to you about right now, is giving that localized operational feel. So pre pandemic, we can only really operate in large metropolitan cities, obviously the very dense population. But we also need a warehouse space. We need employees on the ground. That is no longer the case. So we can really expand our reach on what communities we can bring our micro belly solution to. For this localized operations, we would actually partner with someone who lives in your community, whether this is someone who runs a business in a brick and mortar shop, like a bike shop, or mechanic in town, or, or just someone who wants to bring on another book of business and has an entrepreneurial spirit. Again, this individual will know your community. They live in your community, and they'll be running day to day operations. So this individual actually formed a corporation, run the small scooter business through that corporation. Just kind of want to take you through a day in the life of this individual. Number one, they will have to be mechanically savvy to run operations since they'll be maintenanceing and repairing any scooters throughout the day. But also, I'd love recommendations and referrals if the city thinks an individual would be really good at running scooter operations. We love referrals, but we also generate our own leads through job boards as well. With internal team that then vets and interviews these candidates and selects the strongest one. They go through four weeks of intense training and then they'll be good to run scooter operations. But just quickly through a day in the life of this local entrepreneur. So all charging is done behind closed doors, so this individual will have a warehouse space somewhere where they'll be storing the vehicles overnight. All vehicles that need to be charged will be picked up off the streets daily and then charge up to a hundred percent. Again, we want to be a reliable source of transportation. Of course, that starts with charging the scooters each and every day. Again, operations usually start about six A M. So first things first, this local individual will strategically place them throughout the community. So these in initial parking spots, as you may, we call them nest locations, Bird pun number two for you. These are just strategic high demand areas, so we're putting them in the best area to serve the community. So where we're seeing traffic, obviously, we love recommendations from the community, the administration. But at the end of the day, we are a data company, so the longer we run operations, the better we get at it. We see hard data, we see trends, and we respond to it as well. The community themselves will also have a city dashboard where it gives you a very transparent view into the success of this program. Number one, you'll be able to see where the birds are at in real time on an interactive map. And number two, you get trip data as well, so you get to see where rides are starting, where rides are ending, and the route that rider took. So we actually are able to see where people are opening up the Bird app, looking for Bird rides. So again, we can strategically place them where we're seeing the demand come in. Throughout the day, this is what I think is the coolest part of that, having these localized operations, is this local fleet manager is proactively managing the fleet of Bird scooters, so getting multiple touch points on each and every scooter. They are doing something called rebalancing that is moving low demand scooters back to high demand areas. So obviously, we have those initial parking spots that we now know are high demand areas. So let's say Jimmy takes it from the downtown area and takes it back to his, his house. We love that to utilizing that last mile solution, but also now it's not best serving the community in a residential area. So that local fleet manager would actually be notified in real time saying Bird X Y Z at this location has been marked low demand. Let's go ahead and move it back to that high demand area. The, the fleet manager is incentivized by doing this because they take home, their compensation is all based on ride revenue percentage. So the more rides that happen on their fleet of Bird scooters, the more money into their pockets. So they're being incentivized to make sure that these scooters are always in high demand areas. Anytime a bird is marked damaged by a rider, the local fleet manager is notified. It's pulled off the rider map, doesn't have the ability. That local fleet manager picks it up, takes it back, performs repair. Same thing with low battery. Operations usually run about till midnight, sometimes ten P M. on seasonality. If you do open up the Bird app outside of those operating hours, nothing will be available to rent and to ride. Again, any bird that needs to be charged will be picked up off the streets overnight in the warehouse, getting charged up and repaired. The local impact, fifty-six percent of these rides do connect to a local business. So giving the community another means to get out into the community, helping that local spend. But there also is a sense of leisure and activity as well. So you will see joy riding on these scooters with no definite destination, especially, I grew up in the Midwest. You know how those early spring days are when it gets nice out. It's nice to have an open air, sustainable form of transportation. We will see the people on these scooters as well. But again, fifty-six percent of these do connect to a local business. That local fleet manager are, last year or this year average, they took home about seventy thousand dollars. So it's a significant amount of money that is on a fleet size of about seventy-five scooters. With East Point's population, we would be starting fifty, and based on utilization, we might grow or decrease that really just based on demand. So we define, do define success as about two and a half rides per day per scooter. We're seeing five rides, six rides per day. That means we need to jump up that supply to meet that demand. Customer service, every vehicle itself has a phone number and email address for community feedback and interactive growing together. That was going so well, we actually just implemented something right on the home screen called community mode. So on your home screen, as you see on the right side, there's just a triangle. You click that and you can report one of four things. Unsafe riding, badly parked bird, damaged bird, help. Great thing about community mode is, one, it creates an internal ticket for our customer service team where we can reach out to the rider, let them know that they reported, use that as, as an educational touch point. But more importantly, it's, it creates a ticket for that local fleet manager and they respond as well. So if you do see a bird parked where it's not supposed to, just go to community mode, take a picture of it. Our technology aligns with the G P S. It then triggers a response by that local fleet manager to move it to an appropriate location as well. So again, you can report unsafe riding, badly parked bird, damaged bird, or help. Community access, obviously, we pride ourselves on being an affordable form of transportation. So we do have options for low income riders, for those who qualify, kind of giving them a monthly pass and then community pricing as well for veteran senior citizens, select nonprofit groups. There's a couple different innovation solutions that we've implemented this past year. One is warm up mode. You've never been on an electric scooter and maybe you're not super comfortable going fifteen with a full throttle. You can do warm up mode, and instead of going fifteen, that full throttle all the way down goes eight. So it's a nice little learning curve to get comfortable on the scooters and parking management's my last slide. So again, we are a dockless model. We're not going to implement additional infrastructure. All of our parking locations are virtual. So this is kind of what the rider would see. So a lot of times, cities just give us the G P S coordinates of all their bike racks, and we implement these preferred parking locations. The preferred parking locations will give you an address, a photo of how the bird should look when you get there, obviously, directions as well, and it gives you bird's eye view of where these should be parking. As all rides, you have to take a end of ride photo to verify your parking. We can imply incentives, so if we want to throw around a twenty-five cents to park in this location for the next unlock fee, we can do that as well. So obviously, it starts with rider behavior. We layer on some tech to help with that rider behavior. And then, of course, we can incentivize as well to make these individuals park where we want them to. That is kind of my high level overview. Want to open it up for any questions, concerns, words of wisdom? And thank you for obviously inviting me for tonight's council.
Absolutely. Any questions about this council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Curly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions, and one you might already said, but I didn't catch it. It's a dollar to take the scooter off the rack and then, then there are so much per minute. What's that cost per minute?
It's about thirty cents. It is a regional thing and pricing is subject to change, but about thirty cents.
Okay, about thirty cents. You talked about the helmet. Could a person use their own helmet and not have to send for a helmet from you?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, obviously, you can wear a biking helmet or what helmet you have. But we do want to make helmets available for all of Bird users, so that is why we provide free helmets in app. You just have to pay for shipping and handling as well.
And helmet is required?
It is not required in the state of Michigan, no.
It is not required. Okay, not required. And once you take out of the rack and start riding, how long does a charge last?
They can go twenty-five miles on a fully charged battery. So it is a series of short term rentals, so average time being spent is ten to twenty minutes on a Bird scooter. And average distance is point eight to two miles. So it's a series of short term rentals that organically move these scooters throughout the, the city. So not one individual will be going twenty-five miles, but let's call it ten riders might go twenty-five miles combined, and that's what will drain the battery.
Okay, this may be a crazy question, but only because I don't know the answer. I, I, I get the scooter and I, wherever it's going to be, and I go down to a restaurant. I'm not riding a scooter, but is in fact it, the fact that it's off the rack, is it still being, the charge being used if it's not running?
Minimal. So i- it's like one percent. It can sit there all day. The only time the battery's ability to be drained is when it's in use in a ride as well. So if you do take it to dinner, obviously, you park it out of pedestrian right away. You end your ride, you're not being charged for the time. Hope is that when you come back out, scooters will be around that area, especially if it's a hotspot. But obviously, there is no guarantee. If you are doing a quicker trip and just running inside the store, making a quick purchase, you can lock your scooter. So it kind of locks into your name and no one else can rent and ride it away, but that's kind of how that flow works.
Okay, one last question. You said we're going to start off with fifty. Is it your responsibility to find out where you can put the fifty scooters? Obviously, they're not all going to be at the same spot.
Yeah, so we, we utilize the public right away and parking the scooters. And obviously, they are operated where your bikes are operated, so bike lanes, roads. If you allow operations on sidewalks, which most communities do not with bicycles, you, you will, you'll see the scooters where the bikes go as well. But yeah, we probably would start with about ten to fifteen of those initial parking locations and putting three to five scooters in each one of those locations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else have a question? I was waiting for Mr. De Monaco. This is, this is so your lane.
What? Is that a pun also? Um, yeah, actually. Actually, when I was at the M M L convention, I had ridden a scooter, and I'm not sure if it was Bird, Mr. Granowski. But I did, there, there was one thing that I thought was very classy was that each of the areas is like, I, I believe they all were in Grand Rapids, painted off. So you knew exactly like where it is, because I know I've been in other cities where it's not as obvious. And I know, I guess this will be teamwork between us and the city and, and our D P W, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, and Grand Rapids would be running the same exact operations as you would as well. So they started with a small fleet of Bird scooters. Ypsilanti just adopted the same model as well. They actually got up and running in October just to get some feel for it before the winter season, and then we'll be relaunching spring with school. But yeah, so obviously, we will give you the means and however much you want to use the resources that we provide. It's obviously a strategic partnership, and Grand Rapids does a great job on day to day operations. And obviously, they layer on, obviously, the in-app messaging, they do the preferred parking technology, which you saw that one slide, but then they also give that visual aid to the riders as well with the painted landscape of this is where the scooter should be parked as well. So it's a very nice flow of all three. So yeah, that would definitely be available if you guys would like to go that route.
Okay, and then you just would come up with those locations with our city administration, then put, put all the scooters out, basically.
Yeah, so you as a city would get a day to day account manager. And after everything is executed and you want to move forward with this, obviously, we'd be looking at a spring launch. We would get the Bird team together. We would get the East Point team together. We would have a launch call, talk, really dive into the day to day operations, the operating zone, the do's and don'ts, the preferred parking areas, and that's actually where we customize the messaging for the community as well.
Okay, and I think I've seen, right, Detroit and St. Clair Shores are both your clients right now?
Yes, they are. So in other communities in Michigan that have the same model are Ypsilanti, Bay City, Lansing, Monroe, Saginaw, St. Clair Shore, Sheboygan, Big Rapids, Iron Mountain, East Lansing, Pontiac, and I believe that is it, or Battle Creek as well, sorry.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to ask, I think, actually, after talking with Mayor Pro Tem Lucido, she saw a Bird park very close to East Point, and of course, we're not part of your system yet. But if we were, you'd be able to go from East Point to St. Clair Shores or East Point to Detroit without stopping then, right?
As long as municipalities touch each other, then you can interact back and forth. But obviously, if there is a municipality that breaks it up, the Bird scooter would not operate and would not work in those areas. So as long as they're bordering municipalities, those operating zones can overlap.
All right, I think that answers all my questions, Mayor.
Oh, good. Any other council member have a question?
I had a question. I guess, have you talked, had this been passed with our public safety director?
Yes, so we've had multiple meetings, and this was kind of just the next step for approval. So I believe I've had a couple calls with the safety committee, and then this is just kind of the next step in the order of operations.
Okay, so I know, like you said, a lot of cities don't allow going on the sidewalk. So how would that work? Well, you had designated spots and things like that. How would that work? We don't have bike lanes or anything, and I've seen in the pictures, there were like a lot of bike lanes or designation on the, or behind cars and things like that.
You do not allow bicycle operations on sidewalks either in East Point?
No, we do, but I'm saying this is a scooter.
Right, it's the same classification. It, it usually the rule of thumb is where you allow bicycles. That's where you'll see scooters as well. Obviously, if you don't want to see that, that is an adjustment we can make, and really, it's just baked into rider education, allowing them to, hey, this is where you'll be able to ride, where the rules, the regulations, and scooter etiquette. But really, it is difficult to kind of separate the, the biking community and the e-scooter community. Usually, wherever the bikes go, that's where you see the, the e-scooters as well.
Okay, I like the fact that it's something new at East Point. I would like to see with our partnering, I know it's no cost to us, will there be some type of way where if we are, are public safety, like our reserves, if they're trying to go around the city and would, would it be somewhere where it'd be no cost to our, you know, our public safety? We're not going to be charged, right?
As like a, a community group?
Well, I would like to see, I mean, our police are on bikes and things like that. So is there some way where you can put in there where, since you're partnering with us, partner, it's a partnership with the city for, you know, for our police as well to use it if need be, and we not get charged per minute?
Um, I do not believe that's an option right now. We do have a few police forces that adopted their own small fleet of Bird scooters, and those were only usage for the public safety. And then, obviously, the, the regular fleet was for the community. So usually, it's a separation there, but that is definitely something I can look, do a little bit deeper dive into.
Okay, I think that was pretty much all the questions on the public safety. And I don't have, think anyone else has any questions, so we're going to move right along. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Let me know if you have any additional questions or concerns that come up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Bye.
Okay, next, we have the approval of the agenda. And then I was going to go over, which one was that one, Mayor Pro Tem?
Item G.
Item G, the approval of council. I'm going to change that to approval of mayor for the zoning board of appeals. I have a couple of applicants that, that I received their application, and they have a lot of experience. So I'm going to add that to the agenda or redo that whole line item. And also add to the else, I think Councilman De Monaco added approved for posting for Mount Clemens and Santa Parade.
That's already on the agenda.
I know I want to add something to that, since we're going to be posting things on there. I want to add posting for the Mount Clemens Santa Parade, also the Boys and Girls Club. Unless you guys want to do another line item, because I want to add, since we're, I thought we can just join everything together since we're talking about putting stuff on the website. I don't think you should do a whole different line item.
Yeah, you could just add that like immediately after.
Yeah, after that, yeah. Approval of the posting for Mount Clemens Santa Parade on the city's website and social media. Then the Boys and Girls Club is having a pop up event. I want to put that up there for the residents to know about that. And the Coast for Kids, I'm at Bugali Leather this Friday. The dedicated, dedicated senior services is having a grant open tomorrow. That as well, the Wildland National Mayor's Water Challenge. The Wildland National Mayor's Water Challenge, we miss out on that every year. Um, the community uh, gets fifty thousand dollars in a charity, and the city of East Point gets a brand-new car um, just by us um, applying for it and the city saving on water and doing a, a lot of things that uh, serve the city of a better quality of life, so I would like that on there. And then we have an event next Friday at the auditorium at the high school. Uh, Homeless to Homeowner is a nonprofit that helps the homeless get a house. Um, it's like Habitat for Humanity, but I think Habitat um, does a little, is a little bit different than Habitat. Actually, what it does is, until a person gets uh, approved for a home, they help people with uh, resources as far as paying for their rent, giving them uh, resources as far as uh, food and clothing and things while they're on the street as well, and giving them resources to get in cots. So uh, those are some of the things I want to put on there, um, that we can discuss and put on the website or social media. Is there anything else? I know that was a lot.
Madam Mayor, I'll approve those changes.
Um, I did have one question about, um, I see that we're supposed to approve this uh, Bird microability transportation agreement, but my question was, uh, then at the presentation was just done today, is that something that we can come back and revisit rather than approve it just on the spot? Um, especially with some of the questions that came up about uh, looking into some options with the, with the police department. So I, I personally just don't feel that, um, I wouldn't want to vote on it today, being that the presentation was just done today. But that's, maybe I'm the only one with a concern, I don't know.
Um, I agree with that, since he said he can look into partnering up with the police department. I think once you partner with the city, I think that's a um, a resource where the, another resource where the uh, police department can use, that is another way of transportation around the city. And, and if we're going to partner over with somebody, that'd be a good way to partner up, at least with our public safety. We're not asking for our code enforcement, which would be a good idea too, we're asking for the police. So um, I agree with that, if um, Councilman DeMarco.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on Councilman Baker here, um, yeah, I think, well, personally, I agree with uh, you know, uh, tabling the agreement for one, or voting on the agreement for a meeting, but if we could leave it on the agenda to maybe discuss a couple quick things today. But I think I, yeah, I wouldn't be, I think, comfortable um, voting on it so quickly either, that's fine with me to vote next time. But if we could just briefly talk about it, that's fine with me.
So Councilman, we're gonna, I'm sorry. We're gonna leave it on here, but we're gonna come back when we get to it and just table it like you were saying.
Yeah, like if, if there was any council discussion, you know, I think we were just asking the presenter questions, if anyone wanted to kind of see how the rest of council felt about it, you know, before we just completely tabled it.
Well, it's, it's not unusual to, to, to discuss an item and then table it, so that's what we could do, talk about it and then table it.
Yeah.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, that's all I was going to say, let's just leave it on the agenda for right now, and then we can just table it when we get to it.
Okay.
Right, all good ideas. We had, um, if you guess, we got motion and support, please call the row, Mayor Owens?
I got.
Yes.
Uh, just forget it, just go ahead, call the phone.
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMarco?
No.
Councilmember Curly? You're on mute, Councilmember Curly? You're on mute.
Yes.
And Councilmember Baker?
Uh, no.
Okay, going to the hearing of the public, uh, is now open. You get three minutes, if you would like to speak, we love to hear ideas, we love to hear your opinions to help us better serve you. The hearing of the public is now open, you get three minutes in the beginning and you get three minutes in the end. We ask you to be respectful because we have our ages on here and backgrounds, and we want you to respect them as well. Um, Ms. Walton, please open the first hearing of the public, please.
Yes, Mayor, I actually have a letter from Ms. Mary Hall Rayford that she would like uh, read into the, into the minutes, if you'd like me to start that.
Yes, please.
Um, it is with sadness that I say farewell to Elkie Doom as the city manager of East Point. And since this is the last council meeting before she leaves, I wanted her to know how much I appreciated her and her skills to, to stand at the helm of the city. The night a discussion was had in twenty nineteen as to who should get the position, I, along with three other residents, were in the audience. When given an opportunity to share our thoughts, three of us did in favor of Elkie Doom. While I cannot speak for the other two, I do not regret my views then or now. I am simply sorry the tenure was not longer and that a better experience was not enjoyed. I wish her every success in future endeavors, whatever they might be, and hope a lasting relationship has been formed. Existing the last day as a city manager, existing beyond the last day as a city manager of East Point, thank you for your service.
Thank you for reading that. Any other letters?
We have, no, no other letters, Mayor, but Cindy Federley has her hand raised.
Good evening, Ms. Federley. We can't hear you, ma'am. Ms. Federley? Anyone else until she gets that, her system together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this here is Bennett Fertola, can everybody hear me?
Yes, good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for helping out. We resolved the issue of uh, plumbing repairs and the street repairs. So I want to thank everyone for their help and support. And I just got that other issue we have to clear up, was a bag of grass and clippings, that was our neighbors. And uh, uh, Darren called me the other day, the soup, the director of DPW, and he also said he sits in on the meetings, and he did everything he could do, and he says, I, he reached out twice and he didn't get no response of the bag of clippings. And I'd like to get reimbursed for the hundred forty-one dollars and fifteen cents, because my tenant moved in August seventh, and she got tagged August twenty-eighth, so she was there for two weeks. She moved from Wisconsin to Detroit, her job got transferred. And uh, this woman is scared to live in Detroit, and her blinds are always closed, and she does not go outside unless it's necessary. And being a single woman, a good-looking gal, I understand where she's coming from, so this is maybe the way if she protects herself. But I asked her, did you see the tag on the door for one forty-one fifteen? She said, yes, I did, but she seen it three days later, and the clippings were on the neighbor's, uh, it was the neighbor's clippings, and she went over there and knocked on the door, but found out he had moved. So Darren thought, looking at the picture, this was our driveway, but she takes care of two lots. She uh, has a professional that uh, comes out to cut the grass, she does not own a lawnmower, and that they take away the clippings, so that doesn't sound right to me, that doesn't make any sense. Why would she drag a bag of grass all the way to the neighbor's driveway when, when we have plenty of room in front of our house, two lots? But anyways, she works hard, she works at Dodge uh, stamping and Warren, Warren stamping, and she gets, starts work five o'clock in the morning, works six days a week. So I just want to get this resolved, because this is, we've been dealing with this since August, September, October, November, December, and it's just a ba- one bag of grass. And I measured it, and it's not even on our setback, it's touching our property line. So I thought that we could have this resolved, in fact, Darren may be sitting in right now, maybe could reach out to him and we could resolve this issue. But otherwise, I, I, I think we spent too much time on this, and even the last time, uh, Mariah said.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Huh?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, that's, uh, she said, uh, that she didn't receive the emails, and I had to send them again within the three minutes. But anyways, can we resolve this issue? And uh, I think we spent enough time, and you did say you had to investigate to see, and we would like to get reimbursed a hundred forty-one dollars and fifteen cents, give it back to the girl and her little son, and she can buy herself a Christmas present with it. And I, and I think that's fair, that we know.
Okay, your time is up, sir, thank you so much, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I actually gave you additional minutes because I didn't put my um, timer on, but we have an additional three minutes at the end, if that's okay with you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we're gonna go um, to, let's have order, one second, Ms. Eddie and Marcy. I think Ms. Federley was next, we were trying to get her back on the, on the phone, are you there, ma'am?
Yes, I'm finally on muted, good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Doom for her service to our city and wish her happy retirement, and welcome Ms. Walton into your new position. I would like to comment on the presentation that uh, just happened. Councilperson Curly was asking if you took the scooter to a restaurant, would you be charged for the time when it was parked in, in a, in a place where they don't have the facilities to park it legally, or, you know, to take the timer off? Would you be charged for the time that it was sitting there while you're having your dinner? And the second comment about that is, if the police reserve units were to use the scooters, even if it's free of charge, if they can only go twenty-five miles, are they going to run into problems with the battery lasting for them? And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, great question. And now, um, Eddie and Marcy, thank you for waiting.
Yeah, I, I have no option on this to raise my hand. Um, so I sent um, everyone an email shortly before the meeting started, and also to the new uh, building department director, along with the new rental inspector. Um, I want an immediate meeting, um, also that you include the resident agent with Bright Lake Renaissance Property, who owns the rental house next door to me, which is two-three-eight-one-five Brittany. I have had it with this nuisance tenant harassing me. Um, you know, the police have warned them to stop blasting the stereo in the email. You'll see the clip, which, you know, clearly proved that's been ignored. I'm tired of this mentally unstable tenant harassing me, threatening me, using the most vulgar, vile language you could ever imagine possible. Uh, she is forever trying to pick fights with me, I don't engage, I don't speak to her because she doesn't even conduct herself like a civilized human being. Because I don't engage, she decides the only way she will get at me is to start destroying my landscaping. I don't appreciate it, I've been here just under fifteen years, I do everything I can to maintain my property. Um, she completely just came unglued this last Sunday morning. Uh, you know, Rich, I'm sure you could easily obtain the body cam, and y'all can see how she really behaves. Um, her language was just so offensive that any woman would just, your, your stomach would turn listening to such vile filth. And she's using this in front of the police, they've lost control of her. Um, and I also don't appreciate an officer screaming in my face less than six feet away because I can't hear him with her screaming. I'm trying to clear the snow off of my dune curb.
Thirty seconds.
Out of control, because of him, his disregard for the health of the public, I have to get COVID tested. I lost precious time with my mom in hospice. So y'all have my contact information, I want somebody to, I, no, I want all of you to contact me and let me know how you're going to resolve this. She needs to be charged, and that cop needs to be held accountable. This has gone on far too long.
Your time is up, Ms. Eddie and Marcy, and I think we just received your email, I think it just came right before the meeting, so we will review it like we do all the other uh, emails that we receive. Okay, thank you again, anyone else? If you wasn't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, I, I was just going to say, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, and if you all did not get to uh, express everything that you wanted to say, get additional three minutes at the end of the meeting, so thank you all. Um, we want to go to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting minutes on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I will support that, Councilman Curly, with just one change, I saw that you had a yay and a nay for the same motion, so just clear that up for.
But I couldn't make up my mind, or what?
I guess not, I guess not, it was approval of the agenda, so pretty sure you voted for the agenda.
I'm sure I voted, yes.
So, just clear that up, and I think we're good.
Okay, I, Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the minutes of uh, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one with the uh, change.
Okay, and motion and support for November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one with that change, please call the row.
Councilmember Curly?
Yeah.
Councilmember DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you, we have no scheduled hearings tonight, we do, we do not have any unfinished business, and we're going to go straight to our reports from our uh, administration, starting with Ms. Doom, our city manager who is leaving, uh, our, our last day is tonight, um, we're gonna miss you, and we want to hear from you tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I do have a few things for our community. Uh, just to let you know that our water bills went in the mail yesterday, for those folks who have been looking for them, they were a little late due to the holiday, and we did have an employee who was out ill, so um, they're coming. Uh, we also have a number of openings, and the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, Beautification Board of Ethics, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, and all of that information is on Facebook, on our website. You're welcome to call our office, uh, call City Hall, ask for Otis Gadsden, he'll be able to assist or stop by, if um, folks like to fill out applications in person, they're also online. Uh, and I know you'll be talking about that a little bit more tonight. Uh, also, the police department will be having a public safety meeting on Wednesday, December fifteenth, at six-thirty, it'll be via Zoom. Again, um, we've got a Facebook page for our police department, and call the police department or call us, look at our pages, we have everything there for you. Uh, this one is pretty near and dear to my heart, this is that time of year where a lot of people struggle. There've been a lot of people who've been out of work, COVID has impacted a lot of folks. So McComb County has a food program, and it is going to be Tuesday, December fourteenth, from ten AM to twelve PM, they have food for families who need to stock that pantry and feed their families. It'll be, uh, I think I might have said this, excuse me, ten AM to twelve PM. It'll be at six thousand nine hundred East Ten Mile Road, that's in Center Line. So um, for anyone who is struggling, uh, has a food shortage, by all means, please, please, please let us know. We'll do our best to guide you and assist you, again, it's on our website. And of course, I'm sure one council would like to probably expand a little bit on this, but Thursday, December sixteenth will be the drive-through event for uh, Christmas. There'll be light-skinned craft bags from Rare and the Lions Club, and there'll be carolers, Santa and Mrs. Claus, and I'm sure that probably all of our elected officials will be there to, you know, help ring in the new, you know, holiday and help this year pass, because boy, we're looking forward to twenty twenty-two, and we're hoping it's going to be a much better year. Um, I think most of us, I'll speak for a lot of us, that we waited all year for this year to start, and now this year is ending, and we're still holding our breath waiting for it to begin, so we're looking for a real positive twenty twenty-two. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, I am, I know we have a new uh, building official on here as well, welcome, uh, Mr. Dennis Schamansky. How, how, how are you?
Good, how are y'all doing?
Good, welcome to the family.
Yes, yes, ma'am, it's been, I've been a month already, if uh, I don't know, it's been, it's been fun, it's been good.
Okay.
The adjustment is doing well.
Okay, before we go to uh, our finance director, did you want to say anything, um, Ms. Doom, or uh, before you uh, leave us? Might I say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, I would like to say it's been an absolute pleasure to work on behalf of the city of East Point. Uh, I could not ask for a better group of people to work with, I, the staff. The staff has been amazing, so supportive and worked so very hard. And we welcome our newest members to our family, which is, of course, the McKenna and Associates, as Mr. Samansky is our new building official. And we've heard rave reviews about what they're, you know, been able to accomplish this past month. So, it is with, you know, I'm sad I have to leave, but I do have family obligations. This hasn't been the best year for my family either and I do have to spend more time with them. So, you know, it is with regret that I am just not in a position to work full-time going forward, at least for some time in the future. But I leave you in good hands, Ms. Mariah is a wonderful asset to our community and she will serve you very well. Thank you for asking.
You're welcome, ma'am, Councilwoman Lucito. You're on mute, ma'am. Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I did have one question for Ms. Doom. So, we approved to do the green space behind the Military Museum to apply for the CBDG funds to redo that area where the tennis courts are. I was wondering if there was, if it was still a possibility for us to kind of change the design a little bit. I know the Military Museum had some suggestions and recommendations that would kind of help incorporate their museum into utilizing that space, still keeping some tennis courts. It's just kind of rearranging the walking path that was in there. Because they thought about maybe trying to do like a walking tour outside, so people could like walk, when they're walking on that path, have some history to read and things like that. So, I was just wondering if it was, if there was possible for us to change that design.
You know, from my understanding, and I do hope Ms. Holman is on with us this evening, I don't know if she is. I'm actually from my phone, my computer's not working properly, so I don't have the array of everyone on my screen as I typically do. But it's my understanding, it can't change too much, there might be some tweaking. The nice thing is, it does not encompass all of that property. So, there's a possibility, we certainly can go for another grant next year and expand the walkway a bit more and do some more things where the ice rink had been before. So, what, do you see if Ms. Holman is with us tonight? We can certainly have her step up and give us her input.
I am.
Oh, there you are, hey there.
Member Lucito, the, where the sidewalk and things like that are, could easily be adjusted and moved around. Right now, we are working with AEW and the county and trying to get information from the state, formerly DEQ, now Eagle. Due to the contamination there, we found a underground storage tank that is located near the Military Museum that might make this whole grant ineligible. So, we are trying very hard to resurrect it, but the actual layout of the sidewalks and some of the other items could, that part could be adjusted, so we will keep you updated.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else, Councilmember D'Amico?
Thanks, Mayor, happy to see that you got your phone working there, Elke, so we can see you on this last meeting here. You got that working real quick, the Zoom app. I had a couple of quick questions too. I was wondering how the hybrid audiovisual system was going for council chambers? If that was going to be ready anytime soon or about when they'd be ready?
They are working on it, they are having some shortages, like everyone, some of their suppliers are not coming through as we anticipated. But they are working to do as much as they can, knowing that they can do piecemeal. I will ask, I know Mariah's been in touch with them. Mariah, if you would give them just a real quick update on some of the shortages that they're encountering and how we're going to work around them, please.
Sure, you are absolutely correct, so they have some shortages on some of their pieces, specifically like speakers and things like that. But they think that by the beginning of the year, that we'd be able to be up and running to have meetings in chambers. The entire system won't be installed, but the speakers and pieces that aren't necessary to run and operate would be able to be put in later.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We can send, when we get the emails, they normally send it over per piece when they hear. Or when dates get pushed back, they'll normally send emails, so we can try to push that out so that we're on the same page on the pieces that are coming in and how we're looking.
Yeah, and of course, I'm asking because, yeah, our state of emergency ends at the end of the year. But I don't know if we can continue that or not, I don't know, you know, seeing hospitalizations are at an all-time high in the state right now. So, you know, it seems like, if anything, it's an even worse time to go back in person. You know, obviously, that's a full council decision, but I wanted to ask that now, just to kind of have an idea if we didn't.
A heads up to MML and the listserv has mentioned that there is a House bill that was introduced to extend that through March. So, we're keeping our eye and if there's any changes, we'll certainly let you know.
All right, perfect, thank you. And then the second item was, I saw that revise was in the bills. And I was just wondering, we were getting, I guess I just wasn't sure how it worked for the website. We were getting a grant, I believe, right? But then, we've already paid them forty-nine-hundred dollars before and then I saw it was in there again. Is that also the hosting fee, we're getting a free year, how is that working?
Yes, it's an annual fee. Yeah, it's not free, we certainly did get the, you know, setup and we got the first year hosting. But then, we will have to pay an annual maintenance fee.
So, that first forty-nine-hundred dollars was covered then with the grant?
Primary, yeah, with the grant, and it was primarily for setup and reworking the entire system also, so that included that cost.
Okay, and then hosting, you were saying is forty-nine-hundred dollars a year?
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anything, I'm gonna go right to the Finance Director, Randy Blum, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Just wanna give a couple of updates, the Div Debt Network, East Point went live on December first. People can now make their payments for water and taxes on that network. We did receive some good news, the outdoor kiosk arrived early, unlike everybody else's supply chain issues. Ours came about a month early. So, the plan now is either Thursday or Friday, they will be installing the kiosk at City Hall. And we will have a grand opening ribbon cutting sometime next week. So, that will be a good improvement to the payment options for our citizens. It was mentioned previously by the city manager, but the water bills did go out in the mail yesterday. There's always a delay around Thanksgiving and then around Christmas, just because of the workdays and everything. But it is moving, they will be coming out in the mail soon. The only thing you cannot see is you cannot see the information online that is normally done after we get confirmation from the printer that everything's ready to go. And unfortunately, we got the confirmation after one of our clerks had a death in the family and is out this week. And then, the backup clerk was sick today. So, tomorrow, hopefully, we will have everything uploaded and ready to go online. As far as bills go, one other thing, the winter tax bills, they normally are out by December first. The file went to the printer on November nineteenth and the bills still have not been printed or mailed. We're kind of working through that particular issue. The, we've been with this particular vendor for over a decade now and have never had this issue, they're not sure what's going on. But we will get it resolved before the end of the week. Fortunately, people have till February fifteenth to make payments without any late fees or penalties. So, there's plenty of time, but unusual, I'll say the least, because it's normally already out in people's mailboxes. And that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, any questions for our Finance Director? And welcome back, we missed you last meeting. So, I'm glad you're back to work with us. Next is our City Attorney, Mr. Albright, good evening again.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council, just a couple of updates. There has been some discussion recently, and I believe this is supported by the city administration of reducing the membership on the ZBA board from seven to five. Because that part of the ordinance is part of the zoning ordinance, that would need to first have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, then it ultimately would come before the City Council for a first and second reading. I intend on having that discussion with the Planning Commission at the January meeting to see if that is something that the Planning Commission is also interested in and then putting together a proposed ordinance revision. At last, Thursday's of Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion on privacy fences. And there was a decision reached by the members of the Planning Commission to remove the variance requirement for privacy fences on corner lots. So, that proposed ordinance will also be on the January Planning Commission agenda. The council's also in receipt of our monthly status report. If the council does not have any questions, then I would just like to wish Ms. Doom best of luck in all future endeavors. And just to say that it was a, it was a pleasure working with you, Elke, thank you.
Thank you, sir, any questions for our City Attorney at this time? Say none, right along into new business. Item A, the approval of Bird Mobility Transportation Agreement. I'm gonna go to discussion, but I think since it's on here, we still gonna vote to table this. I think Ms. Councilmember D'Amico wants to talk about it.
Sure, I just was, I guess, kind of curious what everyone thought. I think it's a pretty exciting, pretty cool project, I've certainly used them before and I think a lot of people do. But I think I would just wanna make sure, I think everything sounded good, just the areas where you can pick up a scooter or leave a scooter. You know, as long as I think we make that obvious, then, you know, they're not like left around the city and stuff like that, just like anywhere. Because I think some communities do it more like that. And I don't think people wanna just see one out on the sidewalk in front of their house, sort of thing. So, I think if we just put something good together there, seems like a pretty cool little thing in our city then.
I agree, Councilman Curly?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, I echo Councilman D'Amico's sentiment. I think it's a good idea too, it's refreshing, it's new. And the only thing I would say tonight, guys, is that there's a lot of people are watching right now, that they're gonna watch and what they're gonna say is, quote, "Well, that'll never work, well, people are gonna get run over by the scooter, people are gonna get killed." Come on, give it a chance, it's exciting, you know, something new in our city that we've never had, did we? So, let's give it a chance, let's be positive about it and it'll work. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir, Mr. Albright?
Madam Mayor, in looking at the proposed agreement that was attached, the agenda, I echo what Councilmember D'Amico also stated about the parking of these vehicles. I know that in some communities that they have entered into memorandums of agreement with Bird Microability. But in that agreement, I didn't see anything in there that provided for the parking of the scooters, for instance, parking them in an upright position, not parking them near ADA ramps, fire hydrants, emergency facilities. So, I think that those types of issues would need to be addressed in any type of agreement that would be considered by council. Certainly a great idea, I know that here in St. Clair Shores, where I'm zooming from, I think there's a couple of them actually parked out on the sidewalk, or recently there were. So, you saw them all this past summer with people using them quite frequently.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yeah, could we, Mr. Albright, then just propose an extra item or two, or whatever you think then, by the next meeting then? You know, we can just table this to vote on it at the next meeting maybe and do something like that. I don't know if Bird would want us to run that by them or how that works, but.
Yeah, I could get, I can get in touch with the gentleman that made the presentation this evening. I believe his contact information, or at least his name and photo, were in the materials provided and attached to this evening's agenda. They may have a more thorough agreement that they perhaps used in other municipalities that we could use as a model. Certainly take a look at that and then it's something then for council's consideration of future meeting date.
Anybody else wanna talk about it? I just thought the, yeah, being able to make seventy thousand dollars for a local business and if we can't find a local business to do it, why can't we as a city obtain that seventy thousand dollars revenue in our community? And I don't know if that's a possibility, Mr. Blum? Do you think that would be a possibility and we can use that on something for the Police Department, transportation or something like that? Is that an option?
Hire someone to run the program. So, we'd have to take a look at how much it would cost to hire somebody to obtain that revenue, but we could look into it if nobody came to the forefront.
Yeah, that's a good option for a local business to make that kind of money. But if we can't, the other option would be nice that the city be able to obtain seventy thousand dollars in addition, that they will not charge us to let the Police Department use that to go around the city to make sure our city is safer, I think that would be another option as well. Anyone else wanna talk about this Bird Mobility, Microability?
No, before you, before Councilman Baker tables it down, that sounds like a good idea, but there's a lot of, a lot of bumps in that. The seventy thousand dollars is a salary that they would pay that particular person. And if we have to hire somebody to work full-time out there, and that's probably would have to be pretty much full-time except in the wintertime, winter, winter down, and we hire somebody part-time, but we still would have to pay that person benefits and salary. So, city's not gonna make the seventy thousand, and it might not be a business that would do that, Mayor. It might be a, an individual, private individual who is out of a job and is a mechanic and needs, needs a job.
Yeah.
We would be helping somebody that needs a job.
Right, they have to have a location to put those, those bikes and things like that. And so, that was my first option, is a local business. But if we can't, then, you know, having the city at East Point be able to partner up with them. And if we have somebody in-house that can fix those things already, that'd be a benefit for us to have additional income to probably take the place of someone that we are paying and put that back into our budget. So, they're paying someone who's already doing the job for us, we can supplement whatever that payment and take the payment, we're already paying someone that's already doing it and put that back in the budget. And they probably get paid more to work for them, I don't know, but anybody else? Okay, you guys want to table it, did you wanna?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to table the approval of Bird Microability Transportation Agreement until our next scheduled meeting.
Motion in support, please follow the row.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito, or I mean, Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Thank you, item B, the Bid Award for Information Technology Managed Services, Council?
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve a three-year contract with Expert Technologies for Information Technology Managed Services.
Motion in support, please follow the row.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Item C, the Engineering Proposal Twenty-Twenty-Two Sewer Rehabilitation Program, District Number One, Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the engineering proposal from AEW dated November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, which authorizes a company to create the bid specifications to make the critical and high repairs in District Number One, estimated to be one million three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Motion in support, please follow the row.
Councilmember Lucito?
Can I ask one quick question, sir?
Sure, Councilmember D'Amico?
For this, I was, so I was looking, this is probably a question for Mr. Blum, was looking in the budget. Do we have to move some things up? It looked like things were like a fiscal year behind, or are these plans gonna take a while? And the engineering plans going out to bid and all that before we hit that part of the budget?
Yeah, this this would be work that we would be fortunate to start by June of twenty-two. So will be the next fiscal year's budget that this would be factored in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's continue that that roll call.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
And Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item is the adoption of resolution number twenty-one dash one nine three one. City Council twenty twenty-two meeting dates. Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have one quick question. I don't know how the rest of the council would feel, but do you think that it would be wise to move July fifth date? Um, because it's so close to the fourth this year?
Council?
Sure.
To the twelfth, maybe to the twelfth and the nineteenth?
Mayor suggested moving up to the twelve and then the following week, the nineteen.
Yeah, so we don't have one Fourth of July week because a lot of people go out of town and things like that for the holiday. So it's a lot harder for them to attend a meeting because the fourth is on a Monday, so people might want to come home on the fifth. You know what I'm saying? If they're out of town for their long weekend.
I'm okay with that. You'll make go ahead and make the motion.
Well, actually, before we make a motion, though, I have a couple of dates, too. I guess as first everyone's fine with that, we can move on from that one. Okay. Just two dates because of MML. So as our, I guess, MML, we wanted to bring up MML Capital Conference and Convention like we usually do. I think. Most years, I think we've worked around them, but there's been a couple of years where we forgot. And then we've got a, you know, meeting the night before the full day of a conference. And that's kind of exhausting and hard, you know, to get from East Point to Lansing by eight AM after a meeting. Maybe that ends at eleven PM. So, um. I think March, I have a suggestion that I think works pretty well because there's five. There are five Tuesdays in March. So if we just moved the fifteenth meeting. Because the Capitol Conference is the, I think, sixteenth and seventeenth or is the fifteenth and sixteenth. So actually, it would be the night of the first day. So if we moved it back to the twenty-second. There'd still be at least two weeks between each meeting, so that still spaces them out pretty well. So that'd be my suggestion if. Everyone liked that idea, move in March fifteenth, March twenty-second.
Okay, so I'm 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 well, wait a minute, I'm confused. Did we already vote for the change of July? So we got March, we got March and July, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I was just, I thought we just voted on them all at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
I don't have any changes. I'm ready. I don't go out.
Okay, if that's, and then the other one was just when MML convention is, if anyone wanted to attend that also, it'd be much easier. If we move the October eighteenth meeting to either the eleventh or twenty-fifth. And I don't think I had a preference. There's four Tuesdays that month, so it doesn't create the same situation as March.
Let's make it the twenty-fifth. We have at least a week, a week in between to build up the agenda.
Councilman De Monaco?
Okay.
Isn't MML convention in September?
This year, they announced that it is October. What did I do to my calendar here? On the second. It's in Muskegon. And what am I doing?
We're mixing it up. Okay.
October, I've got October nineteenth through twenty-first. So what they announced, and I checked on MML's website over the weekend, and it still showed that they announced that at the. On Grand Rapids at the convention this year.
Alright, so you're saying to do that. The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay?
Yeah, the twenty-fifth. Yeah, that's great.
All right. Well, the only reason I suggested twenty-fifth rather than two weeks in a row. We'll have that week in between to. Have the other things put on the agenda.
Okay, you guys are ready to move forward?
Yeah, I can make a motion to adopt a motion. Twelve, twenty-one dash one nine three one establishing the twenty twenty-two regular meeting schedule. With the changes of March fifteenth, changing it to March twenty-second. July fifth, changing to July twelfth. And October eighteenth, changing it to October twenty-fifth.
Support.
The city of East Point in accordance with section five of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six.
Still support.
Right, motion is support, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Item E, the reschedule of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit meeting. Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll motion to resolve to hold a special meeting of the city council on Tuesday, December twenty-first at twenty twenty-one. At six PM for the purpose of reviewing the audit for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Support.
Motion is support, please follow the roll. Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes.
The next item is approval of posting for Mount Clement Santa Parade on city website, social media. I know Councilman De Monaco added this to the agenda. Did you want to start off?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. And yeah, I'll just keep this brief. We just previously discussed that we wanted to approve at the council table. If anything involving council people was to go on the city Facebook page. Mayor Proton Lucido and I were able to make it to the Mount Clement Santa Parade. We did it a few years back also, or a couple other times. And we've got a nice photo that I'd sent into city administration. And sent, you know, a little information that's in in the packet here. Just thought we could post on our website or on social media. I know we've got Instagram, too, so that'd be perfect for that photo. But just wanted to run it by council then and see if that was all right.
So Madam Mayor, yes, I know you added a few other items to this. I wish we do approvals for each one individually.
Okay. I'm the one, go back.
Well, if you want, I can start by approving the one Councilman De Monaco originally put on. To post the Mount Clement Santa Parade on the city website or social media and or social media.
You're going to take them individually?
I think that's going to be the easiest way.
You think? All right. I'll 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 support this first.
Hey, motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
The next one on here. Was the Wailin National Mayor Water Challenge. Did you all get to read about that? I think I think the last couple, couple years about that challenge.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this one I would prefer tabling to the next meeting. I don't know if there's, I think that we have a while, right? If I remember, I probably said, I didn't really have a chance to review it.
Yeah.
Only so I have a chance to review it a little bit more if we get to staple it and you could add it to the next agenda or we could add it to the next agenda.
Okay, sounds good. I think we have till April. I just want to make it aware. Yeah, so I sent you all that information so we get a chance. You can look at it. The next one was the Boys and Girls Club pop-up. They have been doing this. I believe this is their fourth pop-up. The first one was the partnership with Pistons. The second one, they did yoga and basketball. The third one was STEM. And this one is just a Christmas event. They're giving out toys, games, and food for the kids. And I thought that would be good to put on there on the website and on the Facebook page. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I was just wondering where the events held at.
Oh, it's going to be at the, all their events are at the Alternative School. They gave that the superintendent partnered with Boys and Girls Club. Because the Alternative School was not even being used anymore. And so when we tried to find a location, I talked to him and he was like, the Alternative School is not being used. And so all the events in in the summertime, when we do it regularly, all those events will be at the Boys and Girls Club at the Alternative School. In East Point, right there on Grassit. And Nine Mile. It's on Nine Mile between Grassit. Yeah.
I know where that.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to put the Boys and Girls Club pop-up session. To be posted on our social media page. And website.
Anyone else? I'll support it. Go ahead, Councilman Curly.
You have some support, I'll support that.
Okay, motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
The next one is the Dedicated Senior Services. That will be tomorrow. I don't know if we put that on there. And we don't have to put on our website if you don't want to, but the Facebook page to let people know a new business. That's huge because that piece of space has been sitting there for a long time now. I think this is a little bit about four or five years, I believe, just sitting there. And now we actually have some use for it. It was underutilized, it made the city look bad. And now we have a company that has came in and. Put it to use. So I'm happy about that. So that'll be tomorrow at ten AM. So anyone that's listening on here, please come on. It's right there on Kelly Row. And I would like it to be on Facebook. And if, you know, you want to put it in places to go in East Point for the seniors. I don't know if we have a location for that area for resources for the seniors. I think we should. If we don't, but council.
Yes, Madam Mayor. My only concern with advertising, especially the grand opening, is I think it was by invite only.
Okay.
I believe they they had it when we received the email. It was by invite only, so I don't want to put it out there because I don't want a bunch of public to come. Because I think it was only that the grand opening was for invite only. But I mean, I'm fine with, you know, having it placed on our social media page, welcoming them to the community.
Okay, yeah, I talked to the the CEO and she said that everybody is invited. She just wants us to make sure that the elected officials signed in RDP. When they did the other one in Detroit where I was invited to with Mike Duggan, Mayor Duggan. They invited the community. It's for the community, so they invited the community. So but it's up to you all if you want to just do it how Miracle Tim said it, just welcome them, welcoming them to the community. But, you know. I think they also have it on the Chamber of Commerce website as well as an event that the public can come to. So I believe that the Chamber of Commerce is playing on their on their website if you all want to check. Because it looks like talking with Councilman De Monaco is checking. But you can see if. I believe that they're welcoming the community on there.
Actually, Mayor, I was just going to say if it is a chamber, yeah, I mean, well, I know it knows it is since it's a chamber ribbon cutting. I do see it on their website. I mean, that that's fine with me. A chamber ribbon cutting, certainly something we should be sharing on the. On our pages.
Yeah, I think we all agreed on it. Yeah. Okay, can I get support on that?
I will support that.
Okay, motion is support, please call the roll.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
This Friday will be a coat for kids at Bugali Leather, right there on Eight Mile Row. If anybody know Bugali Leather, they're the number one fur company and leather company in Michigan. They used to be in Eastland Mall. We all know what happened to Eastland Mall. And then they transitioned and came over across Eight Mile to the city of East Point. They also have had locations in Fairland, Northland, Northland Mall, also in Ypsilanti and surrounding areas in Michigan. And they are doing a coat for kids with me and inviting council as well in the community. They're giving out a hundred coats for our kids in the community. And also he added a hundred pair of pants. And then we also had a sponsor, which is Cold Stone Creamery, to also help us with this. And I want to invite the community out and put this on social media as well as our website. Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would support advertising the coat giveaway from, I believe, Snolly Leather on Friday.
What time is that?
It starts at one PM, but we're going to do it from one to four because some kids begin out of school early. Some kids are not in school because of us different reasons. And so we're gonna leave it a little bit open for people that getting out of school as well. So from one to four or when the coats last, so while supplies last.
So this is. This isn't through the chamber, though?
No, this isn't through the Chamber of Commerce. This is through myself connecting with a business and asking them to help our residents in a community. We're doing something good for Christmas. Any other question? Councilman De Monaco?
Guess, well, I know. He sent an email before the meeting, but I don't really know too much about this.
Okay. You have you ever been to a coat giveaway before? Or you have you ever heard of a coat giveaway? I don't.
I mean, I understand the concept, sure.
Okay. What other information did you need?
Well. So like. I just like, so Bugali Leather is just donating a hundred coats, you're saying?
Yes, they just done, yes, they are, just like they did a coat giveaway with the East Point School.
And then you said Cold Stone Creamery? I just was pulling up your email. Are they like? Paying for some of the coats or donating some ice cream or something here?
Oh, they're donating DJ. They have the radio out there. And they also are donating the the ice creams. It's Cold Stone Creamery. So I believe they'll be donating and sponsoring that. That's a connection with. The Bugali Leather myself and a more group of people that want to see it happen in a community. Some of these people don't live in city at East Point. They saw something that Bugali Leather has been in business for over twenty-five years. And has never given coats back to kids, and it's something that he wants to do. So I, you know, I'm happy about that.
Okay, yeah, I guess just for me, it's just nice to get this, you know, ahead of time before the Friday deadline for the agenda.
Yeah, I agree. I just, I've been so busy with that. I mean. Putting together an event for a community for a hundred kids, making sure they're safe and getting sponsors for an event. That's a lot of work on me. So sometimes everything is going to be last minute when you're doing things for a community of thirty-three thousand people. And seeking out resources. But that is also a good idea to give that information to the Chamber of Commerce. So they also work well with doing things like that. So I have her put that on their website, too. Any other suggestions, Councilman De Monaco?
So.
Do I have to make a, I think, I don't know, Councilwoman Lucida did it already?
I did make a motion, yes.
Okay, I support it. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
No.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
The next one is the homeless to homeowner. It's a it's a nonprofit that I started. I first started with veterans. But then after the pandemic, I saw a bigger need for families. And children. So I started this nonprofit called Homeless to Homeowner. And we're having a comedy show to raise money for that. And we're asking people to bring in coats. I'm sorry, not coats, I'm sorry, scars. Hats, gloves, and socks for the homeless. And this will be done at the East Point High School Auditorium. Also, the basketball team actually want the partner with me as well to raise money for the school basketball team as well. So they'll be there, too. So. So they'll be there, too. So um they, you know, found a way because they need some money for that school as well in that area. And so we have a comedian that are local, and we have another comedian that's coming all the way from Dallas, Texas, to help us raise money for uh Homeless to Homeowner. I have sponsors from COTS, if anyone knows COTS, they're a homeless shelter in the city of Detroit. And I'm also uh part of the McComb County Chamber of Commerce with, and I'm working with Macress on a lot of things as well. So I just want the uh residents to be a part of giving back to the homeless with this nonprofit. And um and just invite them out uh to have something to do next Friday. Uh it also uh gives us something to do in our community, it supports a good cause, and um we can just have a lot of fun. So that was something I wanted to add on there, and I want to get council's feedback and how they felt about that. Councilwoman?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So I've been thinking about this one, and I do think it's a great event, and I do support you. Uh my only concern is I would hate to be putting things on our website when, because you're asking for like actual cash donations. So because there's going to be an exchange of cash in hand, that's where I would lean against maybe, you know, with the the coat giveaway, there's a business giving away a bunch of coats, of course, I'm gonna support that. It's, you know, giving back to our our immediate community, there's immediate response. You don't have to bring anything to that event. So I would probably lean against a little, lean against posting this one only because this is kind of like a fundraiser where we're trying to raise money for this event, and it's not free, you know, free events for the community and things like that. I definitely want to support, um you know, moving forward with, you know, posting on our Facebook because I feel like sometimes some of these events aren't being posted.
Yeah.
So.
I agree with that, but everybody's invited, and if you can't come, I still would like you to stop by and bring some hats, gloves. And if you want to volunteer and help us put those packages together, we'll be all going outside to those that's actually laying outside in the street and handing them uh those packages. So um just uh email me and let me know if you want to be a part of that, um putting those packages together, or you want to donate. Um I will uh I would really appreciate that. Um so I think we put everything that uh we need to put on the on the social media, and thank you all for that, that support. Uh we move right along to the approval of council to appoint members to the DBA.
So yes, Madam Mayor?
Well, we changed it.
Yes. We uh changed this group.
Yeah, and so um with council support, um I want to bring back Mr. Creech. He's always been uh been on there, he hasn't been on zone, but he's always on on the phone. Uh that was what Mayor Pro Tim said, so he's always there and on time. I want to newly appoint uh Mr. Stokes. He has his own contracting company here in the city of East Point. Um he's also uh his own business owner, so I'm happy about that, business owners getting involved. And I asked him, will he be dedicated and not miss the meeting? He said, yes, I have my own business, I'm flexible, I'll be there, Mayor Owens. And then we have uh Stephanie Werecot. Um I pronounce, if I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. Uh that's Stephanie Werecot. So we have uh Mr. Creech um coming back, Alexander Stokes, and Stephanie uh Werecot. And then um we're gonna fill it uh for the alternates. We're gonna bring back Mr. Jeffrey Lubick and also Derek Hudson Senior. That's Ja- Jeffrey Lubick and Derek Hudson Senior uh for our alternate. So we can get that filled up and do business as usual. Council, any- yes, ma'am?
Yes, um I'll move forward with making a motion. I'm gonna throw some dates in there, too, if you don't mind, so.
Yes, ma'am, please.
I will motion um to take the mayor's recommendation to reappoint Harvey Creech to the zoning bo- board with a term expiring on six fifteen twenty twenty-four. And I'll also motion to appoint Alexander Strokes to the zoning board with an appointment expiring six fifteen twenty twenty-four. And Stephanie Sor whisky. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
We're good.
Yes, Wearcott.
Yes, to the zoning board with a expiration of May fifteenth twenty twenty-three. And alternates Jeffrey Lubick to the zoning board as an alternate with a term expiring on six fifteen twenty twenty-four. And Derek Eldren Hudson Senior with a term expiring on si- five fifteen. These are all five fifteen, I think I said six a couple of times, five fifteen twenty twenty-three. So all the dates would be um of May fifteenth.
Thank you. Do you have a motion and support on these, or want to discuss it?
No, I'll support them.
Okay. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Just, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just uh, I really think, like, going forward, we uh we need to have this information by Friday, so council can review. I think I'm just gonna vote no now, just just uh for uh order's sake here, you know, I think um you know, I don't know if everybody's talked to all these people and um just getting the names just minutes before the meeting is hard, you know, to to think about. So I'm just voting no just for that reason, so.
Councilwoman Lucino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with Council Councilman Monaco that um we need to make sure moving forward when we're doing these reappointments or appointments to boards and commissions that we have the names by Friday, um so we do have the opportunity. I'm just looking at it as the the ZBA really has a meeting next week, and they really need these members appointed as soon as possible, so.
Let me get um a vote on that and support.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Um we're going right along to item eight, discussion on policy for appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. And this was put on by administration, I believe, and let me see, let's see this page now.
Yes, Mayor, um oh. Um I just wanted to have a discussion so that we're kind of all on the same page um in uh making the um not necessarily the recommendations, but adding to the agenda. Um so how we've been operating since last year is whoever the appointment um for a specific board and commission is, we've left it kind of in their hands to appoint, but administratively and trying to manage so many different boards um and uh membership dates um can kind of be a daunting task. Um and so I think our initial ask on our end would be if we can potentially add those boards or commissions that need appointments, not make the recommendation, but add those uh um applications to the agenda. So, for example, if ACDC had um reappointments that were needed or vacancies, we could add a line item um on the agenda uh to appoint to ACDC. We will not make a recommendation for the board um or commission, and we'll attach the applications to the back to allow council um or mayor um to review those applications and make a decision um on on the next council meeting. Um but again, we want this to be um a process and um discussions, or whatever is easiest for everyone um to get the appointments filled and stay filled is is what we're hoping for.
Well, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, yeah, that that might might be a good idea. I'd have to, I'd have to think about that one. But I think there's probably more than twenty um positions, either that uh they need to be reappointed, or there's a vacancy, and I think, I think, I think, Mayor, those, I think all of these are yours. So um they need to be filled, so I I I I would like to hope that you would say that uh we could give you some, give you a recommendation of obviously before the meeting, so they could be posted to all the council people, but that's a lot of positions to be filled. And uh the only other one with that suggestion is that I'm not sure how that would work uh was making that selection. So the twenty positions need to be filled, or they need to be reappointed. And if uh if you need help, Mayor, to to do that, uh and ask for our input, we could look at the applications at City Hall, look at that, and if we see somebody that we would like to have appointed, we could send that application to yourself.
Yes, um, thank you, Councilman Crowley. Yeah, if you see someone that uh has the background experience and um you feel like is dedicated, yes, please do so and give me your top ones, and um we can move forward. I was talking uh to Ms. Walton about filling all those spots. I thought I tried to do it earlier this year, and some people wasn't committed. So now we're back at the drawing table. So um when we appoint people or I ask people to be on something, please be committed to uh being on these boards. There are there, they are very important. Uh even if it's once or, you know, twice a month, they are important. It helps us to move the city forward. And so council can help me uh better do that, please do. Um and because these boards are very important to the city, that's why they were created.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So um going off of what Ms. Walton uh recommended, um I would prefer not doing that only because like Councilman DeMonaco and I said with the last thing when we just pointed for ZBA, it's nice to have those recommendations in front of us, so we can call, we're, you know, let's say the mayor is appointing to ZBA, and we have ten applications, and she's only appointing one person. I don't want to have to call ten people and we're just wondering who she's going to recommend to appoint. I'd rather just call the one that she's recommending, you know, to to ask them before I approve that recommendation. So I would rather you, you know, as city administration, if there's an appointment that comes available, let's say, to the Arts Commission and it's a mayor's appointment, I'm fine with you shooting her an email and being like, hey, you know, Arts Commission has a vacant seat, can you fill it? I mean, like, you could just send her an email stating that. Or council, you know, someone resigned from the Parks Commission, we need to fill, or our Planning Commission, we need, you know, fill that seat. But uh to actually, I'd rather have the name submitted before our meeting. By the, you know, electing party, whether it be the city manager appointment, have the city manager's recommendation or the mayor's recommendation or council's recommendation beforehand.
Yes, and please send them to my email. And on my personal phone, please.
Um, you know, like, when I just did the ZBA, the reason why I chose uh the May fifteenth for that date is because the rest of them were all on May fifteenth for the ZBA. I had looked when their uh expirations were for the rest of them. So I would be fine with trying to align all of our boards and commissions to have like two dates a year when they all expire. So it's easier to do those renewals, and it's more on our radar, too, instead of having them spread out throughout the year at all different times expiring. And I think it'd be easier for administration if we started, when we appointed them, having them appointed on all on the same dates.
Council, any more discussion on this? Okay. Saying none, that was just a discussion. Thank you, Ms. Walton, for putting that on there. We can always revisit that um and some of your uh recommendations as well. Um the next item is the discussion on proposed agreement for acting interim city manager. It was put on here by Councilman DeMonaco. You have the floor, Councilman.
Um sure, thanks. Uh yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was on the agenda. Of course, this is what uh we've discussed in the past at the council table, and uh Mr. Albright, I don't know if maybe he actually wants to run through this, that might be best. Um to come to an agreement with council here uh and Ms. Walton, uh interim city manager.
I'd be happy to do so, Madam Mayor.
This um something that we go on closed session for, or this is something we do? Until we, because did she make the negotiation, does the negotiation go? This is some of the requirements she asked for, correct?
This, this is something, Madam Mayor, this is something that would be uh conducted in uh open session. There is a proposed uh agreement for acting city manager that is uh attached to the agenda. It's a relatively uh short agreement. Now, uh there are two uh changes that I would make to uh the proposed agreement. Um I know that uh Councilmember uh DeMonaco indicated the start date would, of course, be December instead of November, which is currently in the proposed agreement. But I'd like to direct your attention to um page one. It would be the uh second paragraph uh which begins under duties. Um I would recommend adding some language at the beginning of that sentence that would uh have the first sentence read. Uh by accepting the title and additional compensation of acting city manager, comma, and then it would just continue. The acting city manager shall perform all duties assigned that are legal and within the scope of employment as required by the city manager and the city charter, any political ordinance, or as determined by the city council for the efficient management of the city. Uh the other uh recommended change I would make is under uh item number two. Uh this would be after the first uh sentence, and then the second, the new second sentence would read the acting city manager shall remain a member of the civil service. And those are the two uh changes I would make, uh of course, uh Ms. Walton's present. If she has any uh cons- additional concerns at this point.
Ms. Walton?
Well.
Ms. Walton?
At a point of order, maybe, like a point of order, maybe, before we keep going. Should we like vote on like one item at a time here, like maybe agree to what Rich said, so we don't have it, you know, all like ten different things as one motion? I don't know if we wanted to.
I guess I was trying to see, did she agree on that first, and then make the motion on something she agreed on as well, if you understand what I'm saying?
Yep, sounds good.
So, Ms. Walton, what did you think about those changes?
Um I haven't seen them other than um hearing them now. Um they sound fine. Um I do like the addition of remaining a member of civil service.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um Councilman DeMonaco, I'm not sure what you said, we should vote on different sections, but uh i- is it, is it now appropriate uh for me to point out some of the things that I think should be changed?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, uh under duties, uh the very last line, it said uh the city man by the city council, whereupon she will then continue in her capacity as assistant city manager. Then there's a comma, unless otherwise agreed to by the parties there thereto. I think that that unless otherwise agreed to by the parties thereto ought to be eliminated. I think she should have the what, where do I want the satisfaction, knowing that when she's done doing the assistant city manager's responsibility, since she's doing both responsibilities anyway, however long it takes the council to select a city manager, and maybe that's going to be nine months, it might be a year, uh that she is is in fact going to go back to be the assistant city manager. Having those few sentence, a lot of of words in there does not necessarily guarantee her that she would be able to go back. So that's one. I would like to see that that eliminated. And on the number two, the term, the acting city manager term of employment shall begin. I think it would be if it's Alki's last day is the ninth, uh would have to be December tenth two thousand twenty-one. There's a blank there, so if you fill that in, I think it would be December tenth. Um and number three, compensation, the city act, the acting city manager uh company shall be blank per annum with a duration that is, the amount shall replace the acting city manager's compensation. So I would think whatever salary we're paying the city manager, that's the amount that ought to be put in there. Since her salary as a assistant city manager will be eliminated until such time that she is no longer the acting city manager, then she ought to be be paid the uh city manager's salary.
Anything else, Councilman Crowley?
Uh, Madam Mayor, probably, but I'll let those three things, because I'm sure there's gonna invoke a discussion. Yeah, I have a couple more, but let's let's stop right there and we'll talk about them.
Okay, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So really quick, I just, I wanted to ask Mr. Albright a question. So, you know, in the past, we we offered like a stipend to uh Mr. Ultimus to kind of fill in as assistant city manager. Um I believe Mr. Marucci, and we gave them both stipends to kind of compensate them for their time serving in that role, in that capacity. Um and I think it's it's definitely needed, because when someone's stepping in and filling in as the city manager for a long period of time, I think that it really is, you know, important to compensate them and show our appreciation, because we want them to do a really good job with it. But at the same time, in Ms. Walton's position right now as the assistant city manager, it would just automatically be her role to kind of step in, correct? Because of the fact that she's the assistant city manager, and if we don't have our city manager present, wouldn't it be her responsibility to kind of click on that responsibility?
That that is why.
That that is way the uh the ordinances are drafted, uh but there's nothing that would require. Um, or compel Ms. Walton to do that. Uh, the way, the way the ordinance read, yes, that person would step into that role. Uh, but if for some reason the assistant city manager did not want to step into that role. Uh, I don't know as if uh the council um as a matter of course could compel her to do that.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, like um because I know like in the past with Mr. Ultimus, he was like, I don't want to do it. And like thinking back, I'm like. Was he even able to like be able to make that decision because as taking the responsibility as an assistant city manager? It's like if you take the responsibility of a deputy police chief, if the police chief is. Out or if we're in between police chiefs, they would step in, you know, until we filled that position. That's the idea of having kind of like a backup. Um, so that's why, that's all I was trying to clarify.
Uh, Madam Mayor. I hear with Councilwoman Lucido saying, but uh for the assistant city manager to take the. Interim city manager's position when the city manager says. I'm sick, I won't be in for seven days or I'm going on a three week cruise, I'm going to be gone. That's one thing. But after Friday, we don't have an assistant, we don't have a city manager. She's gone. So there is no, there is no thing that I'll, I'll sit in that chair for a week or two weeks while you're on vacation or a week while you're sick. So I think, I think this is apples and oranges. Uh, I, I think if she takes this position and. Yeah, we only got twenty-four hours to take a, a look at this, folks. It's not like, it's not like we didn't take care of this a month ago. So we got two days to take care of this, but I think it's a different story when you're asking somebody to take a position. When there's no longer anybody there. So I think she should be paid the salary.
Yes, thank you. Um, no, I'm not disagreeing that we don't need to compensate her. I mean, I totally do agree we need to compensate her. I was just trying to say like, you know, in the future because. We're not seeing, we're not, we're, we're going to hire another city manager. Where, this isn't like a permanent situation, like we're not eliminating a position. You know, we are going to hire another city manager and hopefully we'll hire them sooner than later. I mean, I'm definitely eager to get moving on that right away also, so.
And you want else to have any opinion on this? Council, Councilman Baker?
Um, I guess just for the sake of being fair, because she said, um, Ms. Walton just said that. The information that she's getting now, she's getting, I mean, literally like right now. So. I think in the sake of being fair, if language is being drafted or something's going to be written up for her. Um, I believe she should have time to look it over. I think that's fair. Um, and I don't feel that she should have to be put on the spot to make a decision at this very moment. I understand the urgency. But I think she should have time to read over whatever the proposed agreement is. Um, I think we would all want that consideration. So if there is something that's agreed upon, I think she should have, have it in writing. And then she should be able to have time to read over. I think that would be fair.
Um, you down, Councilman? Okay. Okay, Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I agree. Um, I'm not expecting, I'm definitely, whatever we decide tonight, I feel like tonight we're gonna. Kind of battle through this and come up with what council wants to offer her, but I'm not expecting her to answer tonight. I mean, definitely. I hope that she would answer by Friday only because that's when Ms. Doom leaves. So that's her last day, but. Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not expecting her to give a response until Rich, you know, updates us and sends it over to her for her to read.
Okay, um. Going back on the compensation, I would agree with uh Councilman Crowley with uh letting her uh get. Paid the same amount that Ms. Joan uh taking all those responsibilities and newer responsibilities. Um, as well. I don't know how uh council, Councilman DeMonaco.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to comment on that, that item. Um, so in the packet, of course, it has my. My suggestion for uh the salary boost before, um, I guess just. Wh- where my thinking was initially, um, we had given ten thousand stipend to. Well, and of course, it's, it's essentially prorated, right? Like if uh Randy Ultimus had been city manager for a full year. He would have gotten the extra ten thousand. You know, you got to divide that by twelve for each month, you know, whatnot for. How long he was assistant city manager. Um. I don't think we had necessarily looked at his salary and the city manager's salary. It just happened to be that. There was only a uh ten or fifteen thousand dollar difference and it's a little different here and I didn't know Ms. Walton's salary. I was just proposing that. As just the extra stipend, you know, it's more than, a little more than a thousand a month, but I. Um, I like what everyone's saying here. Um, I think that's, that's fine with me and like Mayor Proton Lucido. Uh, wa- was saying, hopefully it's, you know, shorter time period than longer that um we don't have a permanent city manager. Um, and then I think there was just uh the one item then left. We didn't discuss that. Um, Ms. Walton had emailed to us, but I don't, I guess I'll. Leave that up to her maybe once we're done if she wanted to bring that up too. Uh, but then I, I think I'd, I'd agree with. Everyone else so far then and what we've said, what Mr. Albright said and then the, the amount then.
So what are we, what amount are we ran on the additional fifteen thousand or the, the amount that uh Ms. Joan was getting paid?
Uh, the amount Ms. Doom was getting paid.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I definitely would support her making the amount that Mrs. Doom was getting ma- paid. Uh, my only question was about the comp. That what Councilman DeMonaco brought up, which was the compensatory time. Um. Because I don't believe the city manager now receives compensatory time. So I would rather try to maybe figure out a way to. Just really align it with, with exactly with kind of close to the contract that we had with Ms. Doom because. Um, we, she, Ms. Doom didn't get compensatory time. She didn't get paid overtime at all. Um, but I know that she did get like vacation sick time, so I don't know if there was some way to rearrange it where we can negotiate um a more set. Time. Instead of doing it for her overtime.
Yeah.
Councilman.
Oh, you mean me? No, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, well, I'd like to, a couple of things, uh, and I'll address the council people. Uh, the very first thing I suggested that we take out the words unless otherwise agreed to by the parties here too. And my rationale was I, I wonder if she accepts the contract to have her being a a hundred percent comfort zone that. She will, she will get her assistant city manager's job back and not have to worry about the parties here too. So maybe, oh boy, everybody's got their hands up. Okay, I'll yield to whoever, whoever you want to call on first, Mayor, go ahead.
I'm gonna do Councilwoman, then I'm gonna do uh Mr. Albright.
No, yeah, I mean, I definitely agree with this one, Curly. Uh, she definitely needs to make sure she has her assistant city manager job available to her. After she's done with the city manager interim.
So you agreed taking, to take that out?
If that's Mr. Albright's recommendation, I think he had his hand up, so I don't know if he wants to change it to something else, but yes, I, I'm fine. I totally agree with taking.
Mr. Albright.
Thank you. The reason I had included uh that language uh reading unless otherwise agreed to by the parties here too. Was uh in the event that Ms. Walton uh decided to actually become the city's uh full-time city manager. That's why that language was in there. Uh, the preceding uh language already protects her job of going back to the assistant city manager. But once a city manager is selected, but if uh the city and Ms. Walton uh entered into an agreement for her to become the. The, the city manager, and again, I don't know if, if any idea whether Ms. Walton would be interested in that position. Um, I haven't had any discussions with her on that uh, on that point, uh but that's why that language is in there, but it can just as easily be removed as well.
Okay, um, alright.
So we have that taken out, Councilman and Council and also the uh compensation. And then you said you want to work on something, Councilwoman, with the com- compensatory time, right? You wanted uh Mr. Albright to figure out something with that.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Albright would have a recommendation for that. It. It's just going to be hard to track, not have someone be there to track compensatory time for.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I- i- if, if this contrast is accepted with the changes, she's going to be literally doing both jobs, correct? Yes?
Yes, I believe.
So right now, and, and, as the uh. As the assistant city manager, she gets comp time, correct?
Yes.
And if she accepts our offer, she's still going to be doing what she's doing right now. Plus all the responsibilities as a city manager, correct?
Yes, sir.
So by her being, by her accepting the city manager's job. We are taking away her comp time. It's a penalty. I'll take the city manager's job with that big salary, but uh. Even though you're doing the job you're doing right now and getting comp time, we're going to take the comp time away from you. Am I right? Isn't that what we're saying? Oh, well, some of those are.
Paperwork says. Um, Councilman DeMonaco had his hand up first.
Yeah, Councilman Curly, on that point, I'm just, I, I think it's more of a practical sense. There's no manager to. Work with on comp time, you know, obviously she can present it to us, but that's kind of complicated and burdensome to, to do. Uh, we are giving an extra stipend, so a- and the city manager, we usually expect rearranges their schedule. You know, to work to make sure just everything gets done. You know, if you're staying after, you know, an hour or two one week, you know, I think you can kind of. Rearrange your work the next week to, you know, to make it work. You know, no one's. At City Hall with the city manager with the stopwatch to make sure it's exactly forty hours a week, so. I, I think just that's, you know, any contract we've ever had with a, a city manager, it's just salary here. You know, this is what you get paid per year. There's no sort of comp time idea. You know, you get vacation time, of course. And sick time.
Councilwoman, I believe she had her hand up.
Yes, and, and I was kind of going to say the same thing Councilman DeMonaco said. I just think that um.
Of course.
In, in the position uh that she's taking, I would rather compensate her with a set amount, a set number. Than trying to deal with comp time. And then, then once she goes back to the assistant city manager, she can go back to her original contract. Um, with, with her receiving the comp time. It's just that um right now, I think it would be cleaner if we just decided to compensate her with a, with a number.
Um, Mr. Albright, do you have anything to say on that? No?
I think that, that's, that's certainly a decision that the council needs to make.
Right, do you have a recommendation? That's what I'm asking you.
I do not. I would, I would leave that to the discretion of the city council, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So you ready? You guys ready to, um, are we uh voting that this goes in the contract? So we don't just.
I think Mr., I think it's the Baker had the time.
I'm sorry, it's you, Councilman.
Oh no, that's okay. Um, no, I do know for a fact um that she does keep a, a record of her comp time. I know that. Um, so you can ask her for any day of any kind of time she's accumulated. Give her a date, she can tell you what she did and why she accumulated that time. Um, we have somebody that it sounds like we all trust. And that's really what it, I think we should stick to that. Um, and bottom line, I wouldn't let the comp time be a thing of. To, to hold us, hold us back. And it's similar to the point of, you know, do we go forward or do we not? But if that's something that's important to her and we trust her and we believe that she's capable of doing the job, I sat down and talked with her personally. About the scope of her job. I wouldn't let that be a hang up for me. So um, that's, that's pretty much all those, all that I had else to add.
So what happens next, uh, Madam Mayor, is the uh.
Well, it sounds like we got uh three to two on that. It seems like you vote on everything else as far as. Taking out the uh unless otherwise agreed to by the parties here too, uh under the duties. We agreed upon giving her the compensation um as she would as if she was a city manager, which um Ms. Doom had. And it sounds like we all agree to um allowing her compensatory time, compensatory time, so.
As Mr. Albright said that uh she would stay in the civil service.
Yes.
And he has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Albright.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. So under section three compensation, uh, that line should be filled in with the uh. With Ms. Doom's uh current salary.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, what, what's the? As I said, you know, we, I, I guess we, if we have to, if we haven't gotten uh. Um, Mr. Albright uh together to get the contract and it gets signed, then we have to, it has to come back to us, correct? Is that right, Mr. Albright?
Well, I would, I would think it has to go to Ms. uh Walton and she.
Yeah.
The negotiation terms, then it comes back to us.
That's right. If, if she agrees, then do we wait two weeks to sign the contract, approve the contract as rewritten, uh, Mr. Albright?
Uh, Mr. Curly, uh, if uh. The, the council has approved uh this offer and uh someone could make a motion to um. Uh, make this offer to uh Ms. Walton and uh, uh, subject to the, 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 the terms that have been agreed to. By the council this evening, and if she accepts, then uh, then she can uh sign the agreement. If she has a, a counter proposal, then yes, it would need to then come back in front of the uh, the city council for further negotiations.
Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one quick question. So, Mr. Curly, an item, and under I, number one. Under number one, are we still removing unless otherwise agreed by the parties? I know Rich explained it, so I just wanted to clarify with you. If you wanted, it's still removed.
I still think that should be removed.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion if um you would like.
Well, do we want to uh decide on a, on a date that she, is it Friday that we want to answer for her? Do y'all want to decide on a date now as well? Right?
I don't need to set a date. I think she'll move quickly. I think she'll move quickly on her own.
Okay.
If we don't, if, if we don't make it by Friday when uh. Uh, Elkie is totally gone, uh, she would automatically would be the. She's, she's still, even on Friday and Saturday, she's going to be the assistant, she's going to be the interim city manager. But you know, it, it depends on how fast that she and Mr. Albright could get together.
Right.
Ms. Walton, I know you're in the wrong. I don't want to act like you're invisible. What date? What's a good, uh, do you think you have an answer by Friday or one? What do you think is uh fair?
Um, it kind of depends on when I get it from, from Mr. Albright. Um.
Okay.
When I get it from him, I'll review it as soon as possible and get it back this week for sure.
Okay, that sounds good. I think you have it um in a fair amount of time. So with those changes being made. Um, Council, you want to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to um. Offer Mrs. Walton the agreement for acting city manager provided by our attorney, Mr. Albright. With the changes under number one, that Mr. Albright recommended. Also, the change of removing unless otherwise agreed to by parties here too, the Councilman Curly recommended. And then under two, I would like it to start on December tenth, twenty twenty-one. Also adding the second line that Mr. Albright recommended. And then under three, have the compensation be a hundred twenty-two thousand per. Anum, and I, and then at the end, just have the date changed to the date of we agree on it.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Then, Madam Mayor, I, then uh, under uh item four, uh, that shall read the acting city manager shall be paid compensatory time. I don't know if that was part of the motion.
No, I know, uh, we added, she said all the changes that we made, so.
So you're right, so. You're okay, I see that. Um, I'm going to say shall not in my motion and we can revote. It's all amend my motion. To say shall not be paid compensatory time.
Support.
Motion and support, call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Um, I need, I need some clarity. So now we're changing it to say that she will not be paid compensatory time because I thought that we were. I thought it was agreed that she would be. So I, I just need clarity on that one because I think if that. So I, I just needed clarity on that one, because I think if that's something she's looking for, I think she should have that. So I'm a little confused.
Yes, sir, it was voted three to two. Um.
Um, so, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And, well, yeah, I amended my motion because I realized I didn't, I didn't do I, um, under number four. So I amended my motion to say shall not be paid compensatory time.
Okay, my understanding, I thought that it was three to two that she would be. So maybe I'm, I'm, maybe I'm mistaken, but.
Yeah, you're right, that she would be, but she made the motion that she will not. So if you want to say is, it's up to you what you want to say, if you agree or not, and we can bring it back, and you can redo the motion, you can make the motion yourself. And we can go back if you want to. But the motion is on the floor, uh, for her to not get that. And we got motion and support by, uh, Councilwoman Lucido, uh, Councilman DeMonico and Councilman Curly. I don't know, Councilman Curly, uh, did you understand the new motion?
Um, I, I'm going to just make this comment, Madam Mayor. I'm not happy about not providing compensation time for her, but, um, Councilwoman Lucido did say she thinks she might have a plan to compensate for that, so I'm going to take her at her word. So I'm going to reluctantly say yes, because we got to move this on. And, uh, I want to see her, I want to see her in that position as quickly as possible, because I think she's going to do a hell of a job. But I also, I'm looking to Councilwoman Lucido to come up with a plan to, uh, to, you know, and not, and not.
No, I understand, but that's why, that's why I'm offering her exactly what Ms. Doom was making, and even in here, she'll get the stipend for the car. That's, that's why I'm saying, like, I think she will, um, still receive this, the same benefits that Ms. Doom was receiving for being in that position. That's where.
And the compass, and the compensation time she has already, um, have, that's, I would hope that this council wouldn't say that that's going to be taken away from her.
No, of course not. I don't think.
All right. Okay, Madam Mayor, reluctantly, I said yes.
Okay. Continue, please.
With the, Councilmember, Councilmember Baker?
Oh, no.
And Mayor Owens?
No. Moving right along to the discussion on federal COVID-nineteen vaccine mandate proposed by the White House and OSHA. This was put on here by Councilman DeMonico, and you have the floor, sir.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And this again, I just wanted to bring this up quickly. Um, I wasn't, uh, asking for any action on this. Just, um, the White House and OSHA proposed, uh, by January fourth, twenty twenty-two, that there be a COVID-nineteen vaccine mandate for employers, uh, with a hundred or more employees, part-time, full-time, seasonal accounts. So the city of East Point would, um, fall under this mandate. Um, there's also a weekly testing component. If you do not get vaccinated, you'd have to test every week, uh, as the other option. Um, the Michigan Municipal League confirmed that. I reached out to them, um, and they confirmed that we would fall under this then. And so I just wanted to just bring it up. If city council had any questions about it or anything like that, uh, that we could ask now and just make sure that, uh, city administration be ready for that by January fourth, twenty twenty-two. And I guess there is one more caveat, and all this information that I'm mentioning right now is in the, uh, brief in the agenda packet. Um, there is a federal appellate panel in the U.S. Court of Appeals that uh, put out a stay, or I don't know if that's maybe the legal term, uh, right now at this point, um, that it doesn't go into effect. I would think the courts will try to act before January fourth, one way or another. Obviously, if they say it's against, you know, our laws, then we do nothing. But if they let the mandate go through, then by January fourth, we need to make sure, um, all of our employees are either vaccinated or following the, uh, weekly testing.
The only thing I would say, Madam Mayor, is that, uh, it's right, it's, it's in the appellate, uh, panel right now, they issue the stay, and whenever they come up, they may say, forget it, you don't, you don't have to, it's not a mandate, you don't have to do it. If they say yes, then I think the council will have to wait for a recommendation from the council, uh, from the, uh, city manager.
Right, correct. Any more discussion on this, council? Okay, saying none, let's go, I'm sorry, Councilman DeMonico, where are you done?
No, that was all. I just basically wanted to discuss it, see if anyone had questions, so I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, let's go to payroll and bills, council.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll motion pay the bills on the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion and support, please call the roll. Councilmember Lucido? I think you're still on mute.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
And Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Hey, we're at the second part of the hearing of the public, so those that didn't get a chance to speak at the first one, you have an opportunity at this time. Ms. Walton, please open up the second hearing of the public. Let me get my timer together where you are. I'm ready where you are.
All right, Mayor, Ms. Mary Hall-Rafer is on and would like to speak first.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just wanted, um, to make a point of clarification. The, um, superintendent of the school district does not have the authority to go into partnership with anyone per se. The use of the facilities are available to anyone who need them for a fee. And so it just sounds confusing when it sounds like when a fee is being paid for the use of the facilities that we're in partnership, because the board has not approved any such, um, activity. And, um, have you, everyone, uh, good afternoon, a good evening, and, um, sorry to see Mrs. Doom leaving, as I've said before, and thank you, Ms. Walton, for reading that for me. Um, my class took up some time earlier. So have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Saying none, thank you all, what attended.
Hello?
Hi, oh, yes, ma'am.
Hi, okay, just wanted to make sure you could hear me. Um, so, um, I'm going to use my additional three minutes, uh, back to what I previously addressed with what's going on with this, um, tenant that needs to be held accountable. Um, the police have talked to her and her brother far too many times. It's highly questionable if he's even on the lease. That violates the nuisance tenant ordinance, uh, requirement. Um, Director Rohib, um, has been aware of this for quite some time. He even suggested mediation over the summer. I, uh, was more than happy to participate, and this tenant flat out refused. This is a tenant who does not want to resolve anything. She has no desire to live in a peaceful manner. She just wants to antagonize and harass me. No homeowner should ever have to put up with this kind of appalling conduct. And the officers need to take it hard. Um, I do want to, again, point out, the community officer that I've been working with is doing a fantastic job. Um, and unfortunately, he's out sick right now, so I have to wait for him to return. Um, in regards to the other police officers screaming in my face, he and the other officer lost complete control over that tenant. No, you know, at no point did they ever scream at her. Um, they didn't even give me an opportunity to finish clearing the snow off of my junipers. In fact, when I went out that morning, I wasn't even outside for a whole five minutes. I wasn't even aware of the snow being on my junipers until she walked into the garage, grabbed some gardening tool, and is violently hacking away at my junipers. I told her to stop, that I would take care of it. You'll hear and see in one of the clips I sent to everybody, her, um, excessive F-bombs and her assaultive manner. Um, this is ridiculous. You know, I could have easily taken care of this, but this is what she does, you know? Um, she's just constantly looking fight. Um, she needs to be held accountable. That officer, there was no emergency. Okay, that was a pure accident. That snow fell on her. She's screaming away, and he needs to be held accountable. Like I said, I lost precious time with my mom being in hospice and having to wait and get a COVID test. He needs to be fired. If he can't, you know, control his temper like that and puts me in danger.
Thank you so much. If you have additional, um, comments, please email us. I think you did before the meeting. Um, and we'll get to those, uh, concerns. Thank you so much.
Um, I'd like to get my three minutes in, please.
Okay. Please start.
Boy, I was waiting just for you to say, open to the public, but I guess you just said anything else, and we're supposed to know that. Anyway, to follow where we left off, uh, Darren said he does not, uh, report to the city council. He reports to, uh, Mariah and Elkie, uh, and, uh, I'm glad they're present with us today, and I believe even Darren, uh, may be with us today. But, uh, I just want to resolve this, uh, issue with the bag of grass. This has been going on too long. I mean, it's going on five months and six, uh, city council meetings, and then today, spending two and a half hours, and I'm not getting paid for this, you know? It's just wasting too much time. It's wasting too much of your time. Like I told you before, you're way too important being a mayor to, uh, get involved with a bag of, uh, of grass clippings. But I understand that Darren, he's just got a couple of days to make a decision and, and it went, uh, out to for payments, and he didn't have no control of that. But I was hoping that we could resolve this today, because I don't want to go on to the next year on this. And I spent so much time, and sent you four emails, and the last time, Mariah said, uh, uh, with the three minutes, she wants the emails now that you, you didn't receive them. And I sent them to you, everybody, council, maybe three, four days before to review them, so this way we can make a, uh, a determination, what are we going to do? I just want to, uh, get, excuse me, uh, get the hundred forty-one dollars, uh, uh, back that, uh, we paid for the bag of grass that was the neighbor's grass. And, uh, you can see that she was not at fault. She hires a grass company, and she, they remove the clippings, and she does not own a lawnmower. And even you could even ask, uh, Councilman, uh, DeMonico, because I guess he was in, uh, he had a small lawn business, uh, company. A bag of grass weighs sixty or eighty pounds, and I don't expect her to take the neighbor's grass and drag it in our, in her backyard. And that cost, uh, 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 well, that weighs about sixty, eighty pounds, and I don't expect her to do that, because she doesn't have a, a hand truck. But can we resolve this today and reach out to everyone? And you can see she's not in the wrong.
Twenty seconds, sir.
Yeah, she works hard, and she's a beautiful sister, and she's scared to go outside in, in Detroit. Well, a mile away, I guess, is the ghetto, and I, and nine miles, not that bad. But she was just there for, uh, two weeks, and, and we put this on her, and I don't think she should get harassed like this. And she spends over two hundred and fifty dollars. She cuts both lots, and she wouldn't take her grass, go put it on the neighbor. She's got enough room in front of her house. So.
The time is up, sir. Thank you so much.
Can we resolve this today, please?
Um, I think I had Ms. Trice had her want to speak, please.
Good afternoon, council. Um, good evening, I'm sorry. Um, first and foremost, I'm sorry to see you, see you leave, Ms. Doom. I think you've done a wonderful job for the city of East Point. I wish all the council members would have stood behind you instead of against you in the situation. Um, I've heard multiple comments. My second comment is, um, the police department, Mr. Rohib, needs to quit, um, discussing ongoing litigation with other people within the city of East Point. That's not what's supposed to be being done, okay? I have a phone call that's recorded that he's discussed some litigation with my son, and I'm moving forward with this. It's not going to happen, okay? Number two, three would be, I was really surprised to see that, um, one of the people are doing comedy shows on homeless people. I don't find that funny whatsoever. You know what? Did every one of you come up in a perfect life? Were you ever needing something in life? Food, a gift, water, whatever it may be? And make a, you're going to do a comedy show on it about homelessness? You can't get them people help and give them houses, because there are so many of them in the city of East Point. You would have started there and started working with them instead of doing a comedy show to raise your, your own self some money. I think that's disgusting, and I really think it needs to stop. Council, as far as you go, I think that all of you need to sit together and start answering some of the, the residents' questions, you know, instead of blowing us off, cutting us off, muting us, when we have something to say or a concern about the city. But if a council member or a mayor has something to say, they get to say it, and they get a response, and they get done what they want. Okay, we're the ones that's paying your salary, the residents. Not you, the residents. And I think you need to take that into concern for a change. This is getting ready to be a new year. Think about what the residents want, not what you want for yourself. And that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. God bless you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else?
Can I, uh?
Sorry, you are very rude. Please stop. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Saying none, the hearing of the public is now closed. If you have additional comments, please email us, and we respond accordingly. Next is the mayor and council report, starting with Councilman DeMonico.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Hope that, uh, everyone had a great Thanksgiving, and, uh, of course, um, you know, first item I want to touch on here is Ms. Doom retiring here. Uh, just wanted to say a few words about you before we, uh, before we part ways here on Zoom at least. You know, maybe a little stranger on Zoom here. Glad, like I said, you were able to make it, but, um, you know, we've, we've talked about, well, you know, we had a whole discussion with, uh, Ms. Walton a minute ago here. I think you've hired, you know, a lot of good people at the city or promoted a lot of good people, like Mariah and Darren Palucci, I see, on the meeting here's, of course, been promoted, and, uh, Karen Purcell recently, and, you know, our new deputy chief, Matt Merlo. Sorry if I'm, you know, forgetting anyone, but the a couple of names that come to mind, you know, is, uh, you know, we transitioned, uh, to, uh, an interim city manager and the rest of, um, you know, the city adjusts, I think, uh, will be good because of that. You know, you negotiated a lot of collective bargaining agreements, uh, in the last year also. You know, we, I think you've put a more of a focus on training at the city, just in, in general. Um, we've got a new website. Of course, I am very excited about that. Hopefully, other people are also too. You know, we've got a dot gov now. Um, after you kind of led the way on that, which I think, uh, is a lot more confidence, um, in the general public. They know that it's, uh, legitimate information set of our old, I mean, cityofeastpoint.net still works, but, you know, we've got a dot gov now. Uh, we brought back the ethics board, and I think you did that seamlessly. You know, we had a little ten-year hiatus in our um, ordinance where we kind of took it out and brought it back, uh, you know, we'll hopefully be giving out some medical marijuana licenses soon. You know, I think we've made a, a lot of headway in the tax-reverted properties. Uh, you know, we used to just sell those off to a developer, and now we're we've kind of, you know, we came up with the council policy, and we've, uh, you know, of course, rehabbed a few. You know, hopefully that goes, uh, even more smoothly in the future. Um, you know, we've, of course, had a, you know, a fair share of issues also, but, uh, wanted to, uh, you know, touch on all the positives, uh, that, that have happened over the last couple of years, and, you know, wish you luck on your future endeavors. So uh, good luck. Um, no, you still got a couple of days left. Um, and then I guess just a couple other quick items before I'm done. Uh, I look forward to, you know, working with you, uh, Mariah as interim city manager. Of course, we've got, you know, last couple steps here before that's official. Hopefully, it works out. Um, and then also just wanted to touch, again on COVID for, for a second again. I just read today, like, hospitalizations in Michigan are, are, are. I just read today, like hospitalizations in Michigan are 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 at a record, like throughout the whole pandemic, you know. So just please stay safe, you know, get vaccinated, get boosted, I got my booster on Thursday. So I've got the three shots now, you know, wear masks, get tested, you know, social distance uh when you can. You know, hopefully, I think at this next meeting, at least, um, I think we should consider the state of emergency or that House bill. I guess we'll see, you know, how that would need to work going forward, and of course, hopefully, we've got those hybrid meetings coming soon enough. Uh, but a lot going on, you know, looking forward to the holiday celebration. Um, and it was uh cool to see the uh Military Museum's last lecture, um, they had a Ford's historian, I think he said he'd worked for Ford for forty-four years, uh come out talking about Ford's involvement in World War One and Two, and that was pretty interesting, and I thought the, one of the cooler facts was that there's three hundred and fifty thousand rivets in each of the Liberator planes they were producing. So that was a lot of work for, of course, all the Rosies and everyone else that was working on those, uh a lot of, a lot of good information more than that, but you know, uh, you'd have to learn the rest from the lecturer, I'd say, so that uh, I think that'd be all, Madam Mayor. I think you muted yourself.
Thank you, I'm trying to get you to turn, Councilman Baker.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, um, I just want to say to Elke that it has been a uh pleasure knowing you and working with you for the the time that I had, um, when I was appointed to uh city council. Um, I believe that you conduct yourself with professionalism, uh you brought a certain tact and knowledge to this job, and uh I wish you nothing but success, and uh and whatever your future endeavors are. Um, it's been a pleasure knowing you, and uh I wish you and your family well, and to everybody else, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Corley.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, I have, I have a few things, uh first of all, um, wasn't mentioned, but today is December seventh, and we all know what day that is with the Pearl Harbor, so even though it's almost ten o'clock, uh, I would ask that all of you would give thanks, not only to the service people who didn't make it through all the wars we had, but pray for those who are home too, especially those who are forced to sleep in cardboard boxes, because the government has not done enough to get them off the street and get them some housing. Uh, second one, uh Elke mentioned it, uh we have a uh drive-through in our city hall parking lot on uh the sixteenth from six o'clock to eight o'clock. And as you mentioned, um, Santa Claus and his wife will be there, the council members will be there, and uh we'll be passing out uh a bag of goodies for the kids, uh so when you come there, expect to stop so we can give you that candy for the kids, so. Um, one comment that hasn't happened yet, but I'm gonna kind of mention it now. I would be reluctant to favor changing the membership of the ZBA uh from seven members to five members. It's uh, you know, I served on that board, and when somebody comes forward, and we have one or two people missing, and you know you have to have four votes, or you can re- you can cancel for for a month. Uh, that's pretty tough, because that means that you can't do what you want to do, so I would be in favor of just keeping it at um, at seven, seven members. Many years ago, uh Ray Charles sat in the middle of a ballfield a few weeks after nine eleven, and he sat on the middle of the ballfield in the second game of the World Series, and he sang America the Beautiful. If you've never heard it, look it up. America is beautiful. Yeah, we have our faults, and we have a lot of warts that we need to get off our body, but we have a beautiful country. And uh all of us have our own stories to tell, and I would hope that in next year, that our stories are much better than they have been now. And this is gonna be personal. You know, I don't know if you had an experience of in your hometown when your best friend living next door moved away. And that's what I feel about Elke. We spent many times and many hours in her office, not talking about city business, but our lives, our successes and our failures and our disappointments. And uh, of course, about the crazy, the crazy things she did and experienced in Alaska. Only, only those who live in Alaska can appreciate that. But then she also sat and listened to my sadness when I told her the story about our daughter Victoria, who died of leukemia. She was always there when I called. Elke, I I need to talk to you, I need to talk to, like a neighbor. And um when we did talk about the business, her number one goal was what our saying is, East Point, no better place to live. God bless you, my friend.
Thank you, my friend.
Um, where are you done, Councilman Corley?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilwoman Lucido.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first of all, I know Ms. Doom mentioned this earlier, but there is a public safety meeting, um Neighborhood Watch on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty. It's gonna be done via Zoom. Also, just um for anyone who does need a little bit of help this Christmas, the police department is doing a COPS for Kids. There's um applications available on our website, they're accepting applications till December fifteenth at four P M. So if you know anyone, share that information with them, have them go to our city website so they can fill out an application. Also, um, the gentleman that spoke about the grass clippings and getting a refund on the fee, I would ask city administration to review all of his emails and put together maybe a recommendation for council on our next meeting, so we can hopefully put that to rest, one way or the other, we can have that discussion at the table. So if we could get that done. And lastly, to Ms. Doom, um, over the last two years, it's been a complete ple- pleasure in working with you. Um, when you announced that you were, didn't, were not looking for your contract, we renewed, a lot of residents reached out to me. Some of the things they said was, Ms. Doom is always available to the residents. If I walk in a city hall, she always makes time. She is quite qualified, she represents stability in the city. Other residents said, Ms. Doom is professional, knowledgeable, diplomatic, and works timelessly for the city. The outpour of support has been tremendous um for you, Ms. Doom, and I really hope that uh you enjoy your your time with your fam- family, I know you've been through a lot. And um I want to thank you for your dedication and the time that you have put into the city of East Point. And that's all I have this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Again, I'mma just reiterate what I said earlier about the Boys and Girls Club, the pop-up is actually on the same day as our tree lighting. It's at from five to seven P M, it's gonna be arts and crafts, holiday games, video game truck, a gift for every child, and pizza and dinner. The first hundred youth ages, six to eighteen years old, please register. Um, again, you'll see that on our Facebook page or our website, we had just agreed on. Again, please come out for COPS for Kids, um, this Friday, we're hoping for a good time and peace. Uh, again, uh Bogali Leather, Cold Stone Creamery, and uh so many others have joined uh joint forces to make this happen for our kids, to make sure that they're warm. Also, Dedicated Senior Services will be here tomorrow, um, uh ribbon cutting, so come out, it's a lot of things going on. And also, uh, a homeless for homeowner, actually, um, one of the guys who a- is actually one of the comedians, used to be homeless. He was a veteran first, and then he uh became homeless and became a comedian, and used the things that he dealt with, his experiences, and became a comedian to better help uh the homeless. Uh, so not only is he a veteran, uh comedian and homeless, so we have a good time, come out, listen to uh some talented comedians to raise money for the homeless, not talk about homeless, that's so distasteful, that is not my image and my character, as you all know. And also, uh partnering up with so many different people, um, with this organization is nonprofit. We have paid so many people, residents and business owners who have lived in East Point, gave them resources to housing, partnered with Macress, and also COTS, that are a huge, see, you know, uh foundations that are uh nationwide names. And so, yeah, so please come out, support our homeless, support, um, and also, we reached out to Macress to let them know that the homeless, if they want to come out and laugh, because they have so much going on in their life, it's time to laugh, we all need to laugh. Uh, COVID has hit us, so many things have hit us in our life, it's time to laugh and stop uh bickering, arguing, and being petty. I think we talk about a lot of petty stuff, and certain people shouldn't uh even be talking about certain things at certain ages in their experiences, but we still have a lot of petty people out here we have to pray for. So if you guys come out um and laugh with us, you're helping a good cause, and again, if you can't come, coats, hats, socks, and help me put those together, along with some other community uh volunteers, are gonna put this together for our homeless. Um, we have, we have a couple homeless people um in the city of East Point, not as much as we did, they go to Macress, Macress has did a a new um development. Uh, I talked to the uh CEO of Macress, we talk all the time, and he's also helped me and gave me some pointers to help us uh build this nonprofit out and to make it successful. A lot of work um we're doing is in the community, but we have more people that's outside the community coming into our community that needs help. So it's a, it's a long time coming, it's something that's expanding, and um we need your help, I need your help, they need your help. And so if anybody can uh want to go, go to Eventbrite dot com, you'll see Hilarity for the Homeless, you'll see the whole output, outlook, it's a comedy show, it's clean, it's a Christian faith-based, you don't have to be Christian, it's faith-based, and come out and have a good time with us. Um, we also, I also went out to Pace, Pace is another uh senior services, right here in the city of East Point, right there on Ten Mile Road. And so we have a lot of stuff for the seniors, we have Pace, we have Dedicated Senior Services, we're doing a lot for our seniors, and we're gonna get better, we're gonna expand. Now we have the Boys and Girls Club that uh our superintendent has allowed us to use the space at the school, with the school needs it. I talk to that school all the time, and they say, Mayor, we need something to do for our children. And working with the Boys and Girls Club, and working with our superintendent, and so many knowledgeable and experienced and uh successful people have worked with me, with the Boys and Girls Club, to make this possible. And I want to say thank you, because we have four successful pop-ups, our city is growing, we have new businesses, and I pray and I see that um the city of East Point is gonna be doing some big things in twenty twenty-two. So I'm excited about that, continues to pray for our city, our residents, I thank everyone who came on this meeting to speak your opinions, whether they were good, bad, or negative, you came and you showed up, and so I'll be praying for you all. Um, anything else we want to say, I see none, but I want to say, uh, I would like to say thank you for your time here, Ms. Doom. Uh, we spent two years together, I think we we both came in together, so uh close at the same time. So um we we have our conversations, we had our ups, we had our downs, but um you did a lot for the city. And for that, we can move forward into a place that we never was before. So bravo to you, um, take a bow for the work you have done, I pray for you, I pray for your family, you have been through a lot, so have I, and so have so many people on here. Um, I just lost another person in my life, I think I'm losing people, it seemed like every month with COVID. And so um it's time to come together, pray for each other, laugh, and come together, it's time. Um, so with that being said, we're going to adjourn this meeting, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Or?
Motion and support, please call the roll. Councilmember Curley.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lucido. Councilwoman?
I think we heard you.
Okay. Sounds good, meeting adjourned, you all have a good night, God bless you.
Thank you, Sarah.